I want to welcome everybody to the City of Littleton Planning Board. I want to go ahead and get started. If you're wanting to speak at the hearing, you need to sign in at the back. We don't need to, but if you're here, please sign in at the back. Go ahead and start the hearing with a roll call.
Board member Bert Lang.
Here.
Board member Bolt.
Here.
Board member Juzan.
Here.
Board member Elred.
Is that me? Here, Elred.
Board member Graham.
Here.
Board member Moore.
Here.
Board member Rednicki.
Also present.
And board member Samuelson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, thank you.
There's nothing new or being added to the agenda, so we'll go past that. The next item is minutes from -- approval of the minutes from May 13th, 2013. Have the board members had a chance to review that? Are there any comments? Or corrections? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. I'll cast your vote. Approval of the minutes pass. Now we have a time for any unscheduled appearances. Anyone from the -- any residents of City of Littleton who just want to address the board on issues or comments not related to the hearing tonight. Please come forward and state your name and address. And one here? And then Pat.
Good evening. My name is Ben Burkett. I live at 5730 South Beamer Street here in Littleton. I have two things I want to talk to you about very quickly. First is, I know you all are volunteers, and I just want to say thank you for your time. I know there's nights like tonight that may go on long or not. That leads me to my second request is, in the past, I know there's been requests for not to hear duplicate or repetitive comments from people here who are here to speak. And what I suggest is, go ahead and make the request of that, but if an individual comes up and speaks, it is their right to speak, even if it is a repeat. There is a possibility that one individual may say something that is a little different, that may reach someone a little differently. So I ask of you, do not interrupt them and do not cut them short. Let them speak. That's it. And again, thank you for your time. I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Board. My name is Pam Chadbourne. I live at 5402 South Nevada Street at the corner of Crestline and Nevada. I'm a block and a half from residences at Nevada Place, which were approved by the city council. The rezoning to high-density apartments was approved for them a couple of months ago, several months ago. So I've been speaking unscheduled citizen appearances in a sequence here, talking about the planning process and the city management required for good planning. And I'd like to continue that tonight. So if I could have the projector.
Give the overhead. I'm going to have to put the time wrong.
Okay. So last time, I think I talked about a radical change in specifically the Broadstone Report. But I'm going to talk about radicalism in Littleton at large about rezoning and high-density apartment housing. Both of those are radical, and radical is defined as an extreme change. There's a reason for the current zoning, and we need to know the impact of the current zoning built out over time. We need to know what the impact of a proposed change is on the existing plan, and we need to know the damages and the advantages, the trade-offs, the pros and cons, the risks of not rezoning compared to rezoning. Could be bad, could be bad, good, we don't know. High-density apartment housing is radical. They have a limited value to a city. I admit that they have value. It's a limited value. They cost services, they have cyclic demand, and there is a risk of vacancy, degraded living conditions that affect a whole neighborhood. The market drives overbuilding and underbuilding. It's just a cycle, and it goes on and on. It's essential to integrate differing income levels in large projects. We learned that in my lifetime in the '60s, before that even. So one project with one kind of income level with hundreds of units is probably a risk. And they have limited appeal. They're good for people during certain life phases, but not for all of them. They become inappropriate and undesired for a large number of people at certain times. Even more radical is to rezone and to build high-density apartments with no analysis, no rationale, no understanding of the impact they have on the city. So let me just mention, the investment environment that we're in is transient. There's a favorable environment for short-term real estate investment. The Denver market is currently undersupplied in apartments. The apartment market is growing fast now, and the market attracts investors in high-density apartments for the next three to five to eight years. Then the market will become saturated, vacancies will increase, and rents will fall. So I'm going to mention Mr. Kerry Bruteig. I apologize if I don't pronounce his name correctly, but he's an advisor to CNBC, Alliance, and many other applicants. And he's a well-qualified guy. Been working in apartment appraisal specialty in that exclusive specialty for over 20 years. And I talked to him today. He's a nice guy, and he's a subject matter expert. But no city has elected him or hired him to do city planning. In no way should Littleton let the city's future rest on Mr. Bruteig's three-year apartment investment advice to investors, because that's what his analysis is kind of for, three, My question is, where's the Kerry Bruteig for Littleton? Where's the city's analysis for the city? We have not heard a feasibility or viability analysis from or for the city's point of view. We need to understand five, 10, 20, 40-year assessments for all the impact elements by neighborhood, area, corridor, and the integrated impact on the city of each project. How does it limit other development? How does it affect neighbors' property values and quality of life? And my example is traffic. We have two east-west corridors, Broadway and Santa Fe, and they go through, but our -- sorry, north-south, but our east-west corridors are almost all blocked. 470 goes through, but it already has problems with capacity, and they're talking about a restricted lane already for it. And the south part of -- the part south of that is not built out yet. So the rest of our corridors have a limited carrying capacity, and we need to understand what we can build there before we start to totally clog the drains at each end. And that's my example for why we need to do good planning and why when we get petitions to change it, zoning, we understand what those impacts are. So thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Thank you.
Hi, Charlene Williams, 850 West Powers Drive. I am here to talk on behalf of District 2 about density. District 2 has the highest density in Littleton. I have given you a sampling of the Littleton CSAT scores, say that fast, of the last five years. I have highlighted the schools which have some transient population, and as you can see, they are struggling to keep up with non-transient schools. I have been a paid staff member at three of those transient schools, a volunteer at four of those schools. My children attended those schools. We love the staff, and we love the kids. Unfortunately and unfairly, it is very hard for a child to keep up when he or she must change schools every year or two. It is equally hard on our teachers to bring all the children up to the high-Littleton standard only to have those kids leave and be replaced with another group of kids coming in from the school district which is inferior to ours. It takes its toll on our school system. Littleton chooses to ignore the condition of its aging apartment buildings. These new units will not be replacing the older buildings. All of the older buildings will remain. All of the rental units in Littleton went uninspected for 10 years. Many still remain uninspected after 13 or more years. If the city cannot provide enough staff to inspect what we already have, how can they possibly keep up with the thousands of new units already approved and being built? All of the new buildings are going to bring new competition, forcing our existing landlords within our city to lower their rents, lower their maintenance, and stop screening. They will in fact create slum lords in all District of Littleton and even more slum lords in District 2. Slum lords don't screen tenants, don't enforce codes, and take advantage of the most vulnerable segment of our society. Littleton's Public Housing Authority inspects the units of its 285 Section 8 clients, and we thank them. But they do not inspect a large number of subsidized units in Littleton rented to persons with Section 8 vouchers given to them from Denver and Aurora and other area cities. Those tenants are at the mercy of the landlords. The number of residents who cannot speak English and therefore unable to protect themselves from slum lords is growing. Littleton should be ashamed of itself for its failure to provide decent, safe housing to all income levels in all of the neighborhoods in our city. I have given you headlines about murders and drugs and gangs in the Northeast. District 2 problems are soon going to be problems in all of Littleton. High density with high turnaround rate creates crime. High density with a high turnaround ages a city, and high density with a high turnaround rate is not what Littleton citizens want. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Colleen Gray. I live at 3080 West Parnas Avenue, Littleton 80123. I've been in this neighborhood for about 26 years. Seven and a half years ago, I purchased a condo at Steeplechase, and that is directly affected at the villages of Bellevue now, with possible major changes in traffic, quality of life, and our property values there. I just got involved in this recently, about three weeks ago I heard about this project.
We're not to address the project yet.
Oh, no, no.
That happens later.
Different project. Oh, okay.
Is this a different project?
So anyway, what I did find out, though, is there's all kinds of proposed high-density apartments going on all over Littleton. And this was just the one that I got interested in. Now I find out there's all kinds of them going on. And I'm just more concerned about my neighborhood, but I love Littleton. I love driving Littleton Boulevard. I even drive under the speed limit looking at the old brick houses and the courthouse and the trees and, you know, I just love it. I shop in downtown Littleton. So, I mean, I've been around since Centennial Racetrack. But I'm more concerned about the traffic patterns that are in my neighborhood, the effect that it's going to have with Bellevue and Federal and Bowles, the cross streets there, with the school at Berry, where the kids cross the street now to catch the bus. An RTD bus, there's no lights. I don't really want lights there with all the increased traffic. And right in front of me is Cambian. So I can't sign anything because I'm not 500 feet. I'm more than 500 feet away. But those apartments have been there a long time. Across the street's a huge -- the old turf club. So I think there's plenty of high-density apartments around there. And I just wanted to know if there was any research done by the City of Littleton as far as, you know, research into traffic patterns and what -- how would it affect our neighborhood? That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to address the board on something other than the project tonight? Okay, we'll close that part of the meeting. So we have a public hearing now for the Broadstone at Littleton Station rezoning, rezoning from B2 and R3 to PDR at 2100 Littleton Boulevard and 5795 South Beamer Street. This application was brought to us, I'm going to say a little bit. Sorry. She's anxious. We heard this, what, a month ago or so? And we recommended it to the council. The council chose to remand it back to us because of changes to the application. And so the board would like to focus on those changes that relate to change in density, a change in height, a change in setback, and a buffer on the west side. I'm not saying you can't talk about other things, but the focus is on those changes. And I'm saying this for the benefit of the applicant also, in the name of just trying to keep this focused, because the board has already heard a lot of testimony on a lot of the issues that haven't changed. For example, the circulation and access hasn't changed. So I just wanted to put that out there, just so you can be thinking about it. And now I'd like to invite Jan to present the city's staff report. I have to defer to staff.
The plant -- yeah, okay.
I'd like to, first of all, give you the list of exhibits, and included with that is several letters that city staff received from citizens today. And I will hold off on giving you the public hearing rosters until after the applicant's
We trying to get the -- trying to get the video to work?
It's not working, yeah. I think you might -- I did print it out, so maybe I'll just put it on the overhead.
He's got the overhead on.
Yeah.
Is that going to be a problem for the applicant? Do not have the video?
Okay. Well, we'll just start with -- Okay, well, just to kind of summarize again the process that Randy, Chair Juzan, had just described. The Planning Board did consider this proposal on June 24th, a public hearing, and they voted seven to zero to forward a recommendation of denial to City Council. City Council then had a first reading on July 2nd, at which time they set a public hearing date for July 30th. At the July 30th meeting, the applicant submitted revisions to council at that hearing. In light of the changes that they submitted, council remanded the proposal with these revisions back to Planning Board for their review and recommendation, because they wanted to give the Planning Board opportunity to review the changes that they had not seen This slide here summarizes the changes that the applicant proposed from the June 24th PD plan. As you see, is in black on the left-hand side, and on the right is the plan tonight with its changes. They're proposing to reduce the number of units from 250 to 225, reduce the density from 56 units per acre to 50 units per acre, reduce the maximum building height from 59 feet to 49 feet, the number of stories from five to four, increase the setback, the building setback from Littleton Boulevard by five feet from 10 to 15 feet, increase the minimum building setback for the first floor. And I'll let me step back. The first floor for Littleton Boulevard is 15 feet. The first floor for Beamer Street, they've increased to 25 feet. And then now, they're also proposing a berm on the west side of the property along the building to help screen the walkout level basement on the west side of the building. This explains some of the upper-story building changes they're proposing with the increased setbacks on the first floors. They've increased the setbacks for the remaining heights of the building for the Beamer Street. This sketch shows the increase in the 25-foot setback for the first and second floor, then the 30-foot setback on the fourth -- third floor, and a 50-foot step back from the fourth floor. And the fifth floor's been removed. So, and then for Littleton Boulevard, they're increasing the first two floors from 10 feet to 15 feet, with 20 feet for four, three, and 40 feet for fourth floor, and of course, no fifth floor. So this results in basically two stories along Beamis and Littleton Boulevard with the upper, third and fourth floor stepping back. The more dramatic step back is at the fourth floor, as you can see. Previously, when the Planning Board considered the first plan with the -- for this project, the staff had recommended approval with a number of conditions that were recommended and placed as an exhibit in the attached resolution and proposed ordinance that went to council. The applicant has agreed to all these conditions, and since then has transferred these conditions onto their PD plan so that they would be enforceable if their PD plan is approved. And these are noted as the development conditions that are on Sheet 2 of the PD plan that you received. And of course, just to summarize them, they're increasing the Beamer Street setback, which I mentioned before, dedicating easement for open space and fire access on the west and south sides of the building, building to LEED certification. They've indicated gold. Also, process to finalize architecture site landscaping plans. That is a special review process that's been proposed for this project, where we involve the Planning Board and the citizens to receive their input. Also, provide a space at the about 1,200 square feet in the building at Beamis and Littleton Boulevard for a possible retail café space. They would be implementing measures to reduce the southbound traffic on Beamis coming out of the project. The developers agreed to pay for a traffic signal at Beamis, and I think, as explained in your report, there's been discussion with the Public Works Director about a split signal. Of course, their decreasing in density is causing, you know, less density for a traffic signal warrant, and our Public Works Director feels that doing a split signal with one at Court Place would help accommodate the traffic needs for the Buck Center, the school buses, and the traffic that comes from the courthouse. The other change?
Can you explain a split signal?
A split signal, I don't know if you're familiar with, on Bowles, there's actually a split signal there, where they have, like, for this situation, I think it would be the -- they'd have the signal.
It's coming out of the Hamlet and Boomer South.
Well, yeah, it's the Hamlet.
North out of the Hamlet and south in Boomer.
Yeah, there's two on -- there's a split signal on Bowles, as you just described, one coming out of the Hamlet, and then the other north or further west signal's coming out of Boomer South. And that's what this situation would be proposed. You'd have the one on Beamis and then the one on Court Place.
You -- so as you come out, if you're coming north out of the Hamlet, you turn left? Oh, on a split signal. So you would -- the point is, you would turn left, and then you basically go in a holding tank of one to two or three spaces where there is a secondary light that then releases you into the traffic flow.
We'll have the applicant explain it more at that time.
Then it's your turn to turn, so you turn into the secondary light, and then when those lights release, then you go off into the traffic. Instead of just one turn, you do a pause, and then you go for the second.
Are we getting the?
I don't know what's happening to that, but...
I'm sorry, I missed the question. We're going to have the applicant explain the signaling.
Sorry, we can't seem to get our PowerPoint up.
Is there a chance in the future to practice ahead of time so we don't have to go through this every meeting?
So where did Jan leave off? The traffic signal?
Yeah.
Okay, then the other condition had to do with widening Beamer Street, and again, that's included in the PD documents. We also require the applicant to put together a sound mitigation study for their project to deal with the sound from the railroad primarily. So there's certain construction techniques that are being requested to be incorporated into the development, and that's a part of the conditions in the PD as well. One of the things that was talked about is pedestrian access, and how do we get the folks from this project to the light rail station? And as you know, there's a sidewalk on Alamo Street that's fairly narrow. I think it's four feet or less. So we are asking the developer, and they've agreed, to increase that to approximately six feet, I believe. So it would reduce down the lane, but we would get increased pedestrian ability to go both ways on Alamo Street. And then also, when we plow the streets, that still is going to provide a ice-free path to the light rail station. We talked about... We talked about the setbacks on the top floor, trying to get a little bit more play in that top elevation. That stays the same, just the building has come down. So, they've incorporated those requirements that stated that on the west and south, that there be a, the top of the floor would step back additional 25 feet for 33% of those elevations. And then, finally, we have a condition, because when you initially saw this in June, we were still talking about a, or I think we were just starting a process to create development impact fees. And we have hired a consultant who did a study, recommends what the impacts of residential projects are, commercial projects are, on the expansion of our facilities in the city of Littleton. Council's actually adopted that study and the ordinance, putting that in place. So in this case, the developer would be paying $3,762 per unit as an impact fee to help us expand needed facilities. And that would be in the areas of transportation, buildings, police, fire, libraries, and the museum. So that's it as far as the conditions. So then, real briefly, we'll try and hit these, because it really hasn't changed a whole lot as far as our feeling of consistency with the comprehensive plan. But what we've done is, is we've kind of boiled down the pertinent goals of the comprehensive plan. This is certainly an important one, preserve Littleton's unique character, views, landscapes, topography, human qualities, variety in housing stock, attractive and helpful living environments. Our staff report goes into detail of how the project, we feel, meets those, those goals, and then with the additional conditions, I think moves it a little further. Economic independence, emphasize downtown as an economic and social center. Economic is an interesting review, and we'll certainly hear plenty about the loss of potential retail dollars from the B2 site. So that is an issue. I think where staff stands is that providing a population base will help a lot of the existing retail that is, I believe, in the 20% to 30% vacancy rate. So, we feel that there's plenty of retail space, and perhaps additional population base with some expendable income would help our existing retail produce better. Energy efficiency, we talked about, they're going for LEED gold status, and we do have that worked as a condition into the plan, development plan. It's, it's a difficult standard. It adds additional cost to the project, but I think overall, from a city standpoint, we benefit from use of less water, which creates less sewage, and so on. Okay, now we go into a little bit more detail, and we get away from the citywide goals, and we talk about the Stern Park neighborhood in our comprehensive plan. And as would be not a surprise, most of them have to do with retaining the existing character in the, in the Stern Park neighborhood. So, number one is preserve the unique character of the neighborhood. It does have a mix of architectural styles, mature trees, a quiet atmosphere. The, in this case, I guess you could say that this is another mix of an architectural style. They are retaining a lot of the existing trees on the site, particularly on Littleton Boulevard. And actually, quiet atmosphere, they are actually creating a block between at least a portion of the neighborhood from the railroad track, which I think is, is the big noise generator in the, in the neighborhood. Improved transportation, traffic controls, only to the extent necessary to improve circulation. We talked about the traffic light. They're taking on the voluntary management goal of trying to prohibit traffic from heading southbound on Bemis, prohibit encroachment of commercial uses off of Littleton Boulevard into the neighborhood. And in one ways, you could say, by rezoning this existing B2 site, you're helping meet this goal of the comprehensive plan by reducing the amount of commercial uses that are encroaching in the neighborhood. Emphasis in decision-making should be on the preservation of the neighborhood as a sound, desirable residential area. And I guess I would say, this is probably, I would see kind of a guiding light as far as your action tonight. Yes, the B2 use that's there tonight is a low-impact office use that's there Monday through Friday, really doesn't cause a lot of impact on the community. However, a lot of folks want to look at 25, 30 years down the road, and certainly, there is much more intensive development allowed with that existing B2 zoning. And we don't know what the scale of that is. So there are a lot of unknowns with the redevelopment of the site under B2, but quite frankly, there is no height limit, and you're allowed a two-to-one-floor area ratio. So we have roughly about 189,000 square feet, I think, off the top of my head, as far as the site area. So double that, and that would be the amount of commercial and residential square footage that'd be allowed with B2. The downtown neighborhood plan even speaks to the site, that it should respect and not detract from iconic structures. And in this case, that's the courthouse. That is probably the premier iconic structure in Littleton. And I think the applicant, with the, with the pressure from staff, has done a lot to kind of back off from the courthouse. Now, there are some conflicting requirements. If you look at the design guidelines for Littleton Boulevard, it talks about creating a gateway on the corner, but that really conflicts with deferring to the courthouse as far as the important iconic structure. So reducing the height that the applicant has originally done, and reducing the density, I think helps meet that requirement even stronger. And again, creating a gateway to downtown, in this case, we've kind of pushed that gateway a little bit further to the south, in order to defer to the courthouse. Okay, now we're getting into a little bit more detail. We have the Littleton Boulevard corridor study, which has design guidelines specific to this site. And in this case, it talks about massing height and scale, three stories next to Littleton Boulevard and Bemis Street, then stepping up in height, and that's exactly what the new application is doing. The illustration from the design guidelines talks about, or depicts, two buildings. And again, right before the last action on this case, you saw the applicant actually split the project and created that opening to create more of a two-structure look to the site. There's some discussion about architectural character, respecting the historic context, providing slope roofs are preferred over flat roofs, but really, when you look around the context of this area, there's really not many slope roofs, other than the courthouse itself. But the applicant has done a little bit more detailed architectural study, and they do have some slope roofs that they've incorporated into their project, and provide an attractive west facade to the light rail. And I think this is something perhaps the Planning Board struggled with the last time you reviewed this case. And staff brought it up. You have a potential for a 600-foot. At that point, it was a six-story monolithic structure. And in this case, what we're reviewing tonight, they've done quite a bit to incorporate the conditions that we talked about, about providing some additional play in that elevation. They reduced the height down. I don't know if Jan talked about the potential of berming that west area of the site. So, from the light rail station, perhaps that first floor will actually be hidden even more. So, we think they've done a good job in meeting that recommendation. And then, under development catalyst site, the, the design guidelines bounce around a little bit. But I think what we feel is, it does recommend strongly, or pretty clearly, that an appropriate use of this site is medium-density residential. Another part of the guidelines states that, in a case where it's medium-density residential, that should be 50 units per acre. So, what we take away from the design guidelines is it's recommending a land use of 50 units per acre. And again, tonight, that's where they are at. So finally, you have a number of different options. Per our zoning code, you may recommend approval of the proposed rezoning requests, and send that recommendation on to the City Council. We have a resolution drafted for you to, in essence, you'd be approving that resolution. You can recommend approval with additional, additional conditions that you feel would reasonably bring the project even closer in alignment with the comprehensive plan. You can recommend approval to a higher classification than requested, and this is an interesting part of Littleton's zoning code, is that actually means a lower classification because of how the zoning classifications are aligned in our zoning code. So in essence, what this is saying is, instead of PDR at 50 units per acre, you could say PDR at 45 units per acre, because you're lowering the intensity. You can recommend denial, and if that is what your recommendation is, we are going to recommend that you take a brief recess, and we'll bring forward a resolution for denial. Or you can table the matter if you want additional questions answered by either staff or the applicant, to a date certain. So you could put the, basically continue the case. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Glenn at this point?
Well, okay. We've had the discussion via email this afternoon. Littleton Boulevard corridor study. I'll quote, "Under recommendations market, redevelopment, both, redevelop, excuse me, both the north and south sides of the street between Windermere and Hickory with medium-density residential buildings. Three and, three and four-story buildings at density up to 50 units per acre are supportable." That's between Windermere and Hickory. Nowhere in the Littleton Boulevard corridor study does it mention west of Windermere, at least in that section. Then there's, in the 24 by 36 sheet in the corridor study, I'll quote, "If the site are rezoned for transit-oriented residential development at 40 units per acre, this property could have a value equal or greater than its current B1 zoning." I think the main mistake is, was never B1, it was B2. Guess my point is, you are putting a blanket density on the entire Littleton Boulevard, where to me, to my way of thinking, density, medium-density can vary depending where you are and what impact it has on that particular area. I think the intent of the area at the sheriff's site was 40 units per acre. So you and I have argued back and forth on that, and I still submit that I'll go with my argument. Just wanted to get that on the record, that I don't think it's 50 unit, per unit, or per acre density. It's not blanket up and down Littleton Boulevard. I'd also, one other item, I want to get this out in the open right away. The lawyer for the applicant talked about Littleton Boulevard corridor study not having, I'm not going to quote, that doesn't have the effect of law, because it was only ratified by City Council, it wasn't accepted, it's not part of the comprehensive plan. I need a reason by you or staff as to why and is the Littleton Boulevard corridor study valid in this case?
Certainly. Littleton actually has a long history of providing design guidelines in various parts of the community. For instance, downtown, this is another one. And, and the council actually, when they looked at this study, decided it's too detailed to be a part of the comprehensive plan, or at least that's how I interpret what I've read about that history. I certainly wasn't here, and board member, you were, so you might have a different perspective on that. However, with a plan development, and if you look at your intent statements, one of them talks about using the process to create a better design for the project. And I would submit to you that that's how you implement these design guidelines, with a specific plan, development plan, where you can take recommendations from those design guidelines and make them part of an ordinance with the effect of law, basically. So that's where staff is on that.
Does council concur?
I agree. We've discussed this, and I agree.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff, before we move to the applicant? Okay, thank you. I would invite the applicant to come forward and present their application. How are we on the laptop situation? No? Okay, so we're going to use the overhead.
Thank you. My name is Andy Clay. I'm with Alliance Residential Company, 2000 South Colorado Boulevard, Suite 10, 10500. Denver, Colorado, 80222.
Do we have one more of these?
Yeah, I believe so. Oh, there should be seven, maybe an eighth.
Ladonna needs one, too? Okay.
I'd like to start by thanking you for your patience and your time tonight. After the last hearing, we were approached by some residents who were, had spent a significant amount of time with us through the process, although they had opposed us. And they echoed some of the sentiments that, that this planning board stated at the end of the last hearing, which was that we, we were on the right track, or we were close, or we'd like to see where this could go. It seems to be on the right track, but there need to be a few more changes. So they approached us after the last meeting and asked if we would entertain some, some changes that they would then support, that they would get on board with. And because of their investment in time with us, we sat down and we worked through that with them. And, and I believe they are actually supporting us tonight. They were previously opposing us. So, tonight, we are recommending your approval of the rezoning from B2 and R3 to PDR. It eliminates the uncertainty of incompatible uses and building forms and densities allowed under the existing zoning, which does not comply with the comp plan. At 50 DU an acre, with all due respect to board member Rednicki, and four stories and 225 units, and the possibility of 1,200 square feet of neighborhood retail, we believe that this now fits squarely within the parameters of the Littleton Boulevard corridor study, the Stern Park neighborhood plan, and the comp plan. We believe that it strikes the right balance of economic benefit to the city and the merchants, while minimizing the impact on the immediate residential neighborhood. Still, it's economically viable at this time, but there are variables that change daily, and construction costs go up, interest rates go up. And so we are proposing that this is the right, the right project today for this community. And we have, we've gotten agreement from neighbors who, as I said, had spent a lot of time with us, most of the time in opposition, and now are supporting. So we'll provide a summary of the application and the revisions, a brief evolution of the design as it relates to the changes, consistency with the city goals and policies, and the fiscal benefits analysis. And it turns out, our economic analyst was actually the one who consulted on the original Littleton corridor study. The proposed zoning is PDR. It's now 225 units. The items highlighted in green are the changes. I'll spare you the others which have not changed. Again, a luxury residential apartment community with a 49-foot height limit now. It is four stories. We've had people ask, "Why don't you call it five?" It's because only 22% of the total perimeter is actually, even has the basement condition. So there is a very small percentage of it that... So there is a very small percentage of it that is, would even be perceived as five stories. In fact, the building to the north, the separate building to the north, it does not have any of that basement condition, it is exclusively to the south. Our, the smaller, the smaller unit count has provided an opportunity for us to increase the average square footage to 947 square feet, where I believe our last one was around 890, and the average monthly rent to 1,550, and it was previously at approximately 1,490, 1,495. It's 41% one-bedroom, one-bath, and 59% two-bedroom, one, two-bath. That unit mix is pretty consistent with what it was previously.
Which is it, two-bedroom, two-bath, or two-bedroom, one-bath?
Continue, please. I'm sorry, we need to let him continue.
The evolution of the project, we've gone through that previously, and I have, I brought you up to speed on how we got to where we are now. We worked with our investor to get comfortable with those changes, the lower density, and, but we were unable to get that done until immediately prior to the city council meeting. And the city council remanded it back to planning board, which we were actually pleased to hear, because I understood there were, could have been concerns about what reducing the level actually meant, and we wanted to be clear that we were not just reducing a level and making it into a block, we were continuing the setbacks and stepbacks that we had proposed previously. So again, here, if you can see the hatched area, right there, represents where the basement condition is. So the north building is, does not have any of the basement condition, and the south building has a portion of it in the basement condition. That represents 22% of the total building perimeter. And we are still doing the two and three-story, the step back to the third story and the fourth story, and then that fifth story is entirely eliminated. We have also increased setbacks from the Littleton Boulevard, which we discussed with one of the residents who's supporting us, that was one of their specific requests, and I believe our, on Bemis, we have actually moved it back slightly from the last one because of how the right-of-way rent was interpreted. Our initial concept was, is represented here, and you can see that's the corner of Littleton and Bemis, and then on the top, and below that is the Bemis Street, we had the step-backs incorporated, but overall, we were trying to design to an interpretation of a gateway element, and came to further understand maybe what the subtleties of a gateway element should be. This is the new graphic of the Bemis and Littleton Boulevard perspective, so we have a, that's right there, you see the patio where the cafe space would be shown, and the third story steps back, and as you can see, the fourth story is now very, is significantly minimized, it's, you don't really see it for the most part from this corner. And right here, this shows, this shows how the building steps away from the courthouse, giving deference to the height, the 81 feet, we're now at 49 feet, and as you can see, it starts, it steps down at the, where the four-story building is on the north, and then it steps down further to the point that you can't see the edge of it behind those, the tree, as it gets closer to the courthouse. This image actually, on the right, that is the end of it, that's the end of the building. We chose this perspective to try and capture that entire facade, so that you would see the entire, that entire west side. And similar to before, we're incorporating the architectural elements, the, some of the pieces that we discussed previously. So this gives you an idea of the new site section. Over here on the top shows the existing buildings that are there, and below shows the same site sections, and you can see how the site view, because of the step-backs on Bemis, are significantly unchanged, especially from a solar perspective. And then on the west side, you have a sense, that's the, that's the portion that has the basement condition, and it is, you can see there are four stories plus a parapet that comes up slightly to cover the parking structure. And I think we may have spoken about this last time, but connection with the site and the community at large, promoting Littleton's rich history through building design elements, we, I think we spoke about incorporating historic, and working with the Historic Preservation Board on creative ways to showcase the history of Littleton, the courthouse, and some of The proposed PDR will have the least burden on the neighborhood of other desirable alternatives, and what I mean desirable alternatives are, I mean most likely financeable. So an all-commercial use would have, would generate about 2,050 trips per day, and 500 would require 586 parking spaces. A mixed use, which would be 50% residential and 50% commercial, would generate 1,600 trips per day and require 360 parking spaces. The all-residential proposal in front of you at 225 units would generate 1,036 trips per day and require reduced 338 spaces. The comp plan encourages the plan development process for all-new development within the city, and it does state that, that to encourage that process, the city can consider incentivizing development to that end. I would propose that if there is, if there is different interpretations in the density that the Littleton corridor study identifies as medium, I would suggest that a, that could be viewed as a potential incentive, as an increase in density. So this allows, the reason the PD process is valuable to the city is it allows the city to adapt to market and socioeconomic changes at specific sites, without the burden of major zoning policy changes that impact the entire city. So it allows the city to act more, adapt more quickly to those changes. The existing zoning and B2 commercial business are, they're laid out before there, we've talked about those before, so I won't go through all of them again, but there are a number of commercial uses, more auto-oriented uses, at a site that is, would have difficult auto-oriented access, because of the intersection and the single access in, it would likely put additional burden on the neighborhood with, especially with high trip counts. We believe our, and want our proposal to raise the standard for luxury multifamily residential. There are 21 communities that are market rate in Littleton, which represent 3,927 units. The average property age is 1982, and they're, the average is 826 square feet, average monthly rent is 969, and 96% average occupancy rate. There are no other lead gold developments existing or currently planned, at least as the city's website would suggest. And only one apartment community is currently classified as a Class A property, and I would also point out that the city has done a recent housing study by, contracted by the staff through Patty Silverstein, I'm sure that you've, you're aware of that, but it is consistent with a lot of the economic data that Kerry Bruteg's site, which isn't, his, or his service provides. So I think there are multiple directions that indicate that there are, what the market fundamentals are right now. The proposed multifamily pipeline in Littleton, I know that there is, rightly so, sensitivity to what this community would look like in 20 or 30 years from now, and I would suggest that simply because of the other, I guess, the standards that the other properties currently in the pipeline that have been, that they're being, that they are proposing, ours would be, have the highest probability of being possibly condominiumized over the next few years as the statute of limitations runs out, or if legislation changes. You can see that, I haven't called out specific properties by name, but most of them are two, or three, or two, three, and four-story products with, that we call garden, which is walk-up and is primarily surface-oriented. They are pitched roofs, which generally are composite shingle, composite roofs have a five-year warranty and generally a 20-year lifetime. EPDM or TPO roofs, which is what we're proposing, would, those roofs have a 20-year warranty and a 30-plus year into expected lifetime. So again, those are roof, roofing and keeping water out of the building is one of the things that maintains the value of a property long-term. The percent of masonry is also something that drives cost. On, at the top two, you can see that it is, it's not specified on the top one, we were unable to identify any in the one right below that. The 250-unit project was approved at 20% masonry, ours is 15% higher than that, and then the current, the proposal, which, another proposal that is out there, also does not have a masonry requirement identified. Height limits, we are basically right in the middle, the, many of those communities are 45 to 55 feet, one goes up to 75 feet, there is really, again, we fit squarely in the middle of the height limits of the proposed, most of which are garden-style product. Construction standards, again, we are meeting the building code, which all the other projects will, but we're also restricting ourselves further to lead gold guidelines. And the, the other component that goes to the value and cost going into a, into a project is what type of parking is provided. Ours is currently the only one proposed as structured, I think there may be an error in there, the, the one that says garden and mid-rise would have potentially two parcels of totaling approximately 400 units of, out of the two parcels, that would also be structured likely, and that, that really puts three potential projects, including ours, as truly Class A luxury apartments in the pipeline. Again, I'm not going to read through all of these, because we have gone through them before, and I trust that you're up to speed since our last hearing. But the, again, the Stern Park neighborhood plan, downtown neighborhood plan, I believe the staff has laid out the, how this complies with, with those ordinances, or those adopted And then the comp plan, I think that this is probably the most significant, in that it shows that the uses, the commercial uses at this site are really not consistent with with the residential area around it, and that's identified in the Stern Park plan and the comp plan. And this is an opportunity for the city to further restrict what the future of this site would look like, rather than the uncertainties that B2 allows. And with that, I'll introduce our economic analyst, who has some revisions on the, on our original, based on our revised plan.
Thank you, Andy. My name's Dan Gaimond, I'm with Economic and Planning Systems. Brian Duffney, I believe, was here for the previous hearing, he's on vacation, and I'm sitting, I'm subbing in for him on, on the project, although I'm the principal in charge on the project anyway. Just, as way of background, we are an economic consulting firm that does real estate market and financial analysis, fiscal and economic impact work for cities, transit-oriented development, and land use policy. As noted by Andy, we, we were the market and financial consultant on the Littleton Boulevard corridor plan back in 2003, and that did recommend transit-oriented development for this property, as our market valuation found that it wasn't a prime commercial development site at that time. The scope of work that we have performed for Alliance is basically to measure the fiscal revenues that would be associated with the project as proposed, and also to compare it to a development scenario that could be built under the existing B2 zoning. So the, as I said, the existing B2 zoning, the proposed zoning, as you know, 225 units, average square footage per unit of 947, average rent of 1,549 a month, which is, which is $1.65 a square foot. The comparative analysis looked at a, there's a number of development scenarios, obviously, that could be built under the existing zoning, we looked at the scenario that Andy positioned earlier, a 50% residential, 50% commercial project with 175 smaller apartment units, working with existing buildings, and a scaled-down project, average rents of $1,000 a unit, these are quite a bit smaller units and would be built with less structured parking, and then on the front of the project, working with the existing buildings, 9,000 square feet of ground-level office or retail space. The revenues calculated from the project, total revenues from sales, property tax, total annual revenues are $110,000. You can see the difference, or the comparison of sales and property taxes, about $90,000, and sales taxes about $20,000, and property taxes under the proposed zoning, and then the total under the existing zoning scenario is $80,000 compared to $110,000. You know, the demographics on the project, as was mentioned earlier, with the rent rates on a luxury apartment project, we're calculating that the average rent to, average income required to rent these properties would be about $74,000 a year, which, you know, is really what the average household income in Littleton is today. 2011 average household income was $74,400 and something and change. The, the existing zoning at $1,000 a month, that spending 25% of your income for household income for rent would require an average household income of $48,500. We looked at the demographics on a number of projects in the Littleton area, new projects that have been built, particularly TOD projects, including the site at Mineral, I guess that's a Wood Partners project, I believe, behind the Littleton Station, and the demographics of the existing residents are actually considerably above the levels that we calculated, these, these income, required incomes to rent the units, but in general, you're looking at over $50,000 a year for singles, and over $100,000 a year for couples and roommates in, in the comparable projects in the area. So in terms of trying to calculate what these, what the revenues are to the city, basically we just did some very fairly simple calculations on how much, how much is spent on retail expenditures from income, so you've got an average household income of $70,000. expenditures from income. So you've got an average household income of $74,400, times the number of units, gives you a total household income of 16 million, 16.7 million. And from our retail analysis models, we know that a typical Colorado resident spends a little less than 36,000, and a little less than 36% of their income on retail purchases. So the retail spending associated with the residence would be 5.9 million per year. And then we looked at how, we looked at this location relative to where the competitive projects, retail projects are in the area, calculated, you know, where convenience goods, grocery purchases are likely to be made, where shopper's goods purchases are made, and took different capture rates. But roughly half, according to our calculations, roughly half of these expenditures would be spent in the city of, of Littleton. So that equates to about 2.9 million in annual retail sales a year, which then at your tax rate is equivalent to almost $90,000 a year in sales tax income. And under the existing zoning scenario, it's roughly half that, well, a little more than half that, $52,000 a year in sales tax. Property taxes for residential properties, of course, are at a lower assessed valuation ratio for residential properties. So the predominant revenue is from retails, I mean, from sales taxes, but property taxes to the city are approximately 21,000 net of the existing property taxes. So we netted out what the existing property taxes were, and then would be 17,000 under the existing zoning scenario. School district taxes, obviously, are much more extensive and fairly significant dollar total there, $183,000 to the school district from a project that is, would be expected to generate very few schoolchildren. Again, by comparison, the project at, and I'm forgetting the name of it, but the one at Mineral, which is, I, I can't, does anyone know how many units are there? It's, it's a bigger, it's a bigger project than this. Jan, do you know how many units?
Altaspen Grove.
Pardon?
Altaspen Grove. Mineral.
285.
285.
Okay, 285. There are six schoolchildren in that project, under the current demographic profile. So certainly a net benefit to the school district. And then certainly, we were talking about impact fees, but just one-time, one-time fees and permits from the project would generate $1.9 million to the city. And again, by comparison, to about 1.2 million for the existing project. As I said earlier, you know, we didn't do a specific market study on, on this project, but we did a very comprehensive market study for the Littleton Boulevard Corridor back in 2003, and certainly found that, that this was, the site was, was prime site for transit-oriented development, which was our recommendation at that time for primarily residentially oriented TOD at this property, at densities certainly above what was recommended for the rest of the corridor. The design guidelines may have provided other recommendations in terms of, of heights, but the, what's shown on the Littleton Boulevard Corridor Plan in terms of an illustration is just a illustration of pro forma feasibility that was done for a catalyst project on that site, as well as another analysis that was done for catalyst project at the Windermere location, which at, at that time was our recommendation for where commercial uses should be concentrated on, on Littleton Boulevard. And then downtown be the primary specialty shopper's goods area, that community retail uses be, be redeveloped at the Windermere properties at that location, and that there wasn't enough commercial demand to build commercial for that entire stretch. So in terms of, of looking at TOD, and certainly we have done both market and financial feasibility on TOD projects throughout the metro area, including currently projects in Arvada, Denver, Centennial, and, well, those are currently our projects. Certainly, the, the project is going to generate fewer car trips than, than a project at another location because of the transit ridership. And given its proximity to downtown, we think the other sort of commercial benefits that aren't quantified specifically are, well, are included in our retail calculations are, are just providing additional residential development within walking distance of downtown, which does create a stronger market base for downtown restaurants and specialty properties. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mackenzie Jellum. Business address, 2000 South Colorado Boulevard, Suite 10500, Denver 80222. We wanted to just briefly share with you some photos of a project we just completed in July, Broadstone Gardens at Cherry Creek, just to highlight the type of product that we deliver and some of the amenities and unit finishes that you could expect for Broadstone at Littleton Station. Similar to our Littleton project, we built this project close to, adjacent to a residential neighborhood. So we worked very closely with the Cherry Creek East Association, and we had a great collaboration with them, particularly on how the exterior of the building would look. They obviously wanted a very unique, vibrant building for their neighborhood, and that, that's reflected in these facades. The center image, and I apologize, they're not as great if we, as if we had the laptop running, but the center photo shows our hard corner at Harrison and Cedar, and that's where we designed our Wi-Fi café concept. So just as we discussed, we would plan for a 1,200-square-foot café area that we could market and hopefully get a great neighborhood tenant. And in the meantime, we would use it as a private amenity until the demand was there, so it wouldn't be a dark corner. And then the lower left-hand corner is the interior of the Wi-Fi café. As you can see, it has direct access from Harrison. And then we also incorporated a roll-up garage door to separate it from the rest of our clubhouse, which is the image in the upper right-hand corner. We also planned for a restroom, so we'll, we'll market that and hopefully get a great neighborhood tenant. And this is just some images of our fitness center. We provide a variety of cardio and strength machines. The lower right-hand corner is our, our CrossFit studio. We try to incorporate, you know, what is on the cutting edge of fitness. So we had some ballet bars and a lot of CrossFit equipment, as well as some yoga mats. And then the upper left-hand corner is our media entertainment lounge. So we have some, some TVs as well as a partial kitchen where residents can just come and utilize the space. They could rent it out for parties. And then in the right side is our conference room, equipped with a full conference table, flat-screen TVs. We find nowadays that a lot of our residents are consultants that work from home, so they love to have a space where they can invite clients in and give their, utilize the space for meetings. And then at Broadstone at Littleton Station, we'd have very comparable interior finishes, vinyl plank wood flooring. You can see the stainless steel appliances, quartz countertops, undermount sinks, open shelving, flip-up cabinets, tile backsplash. And that's it. So again, just a sample of the similar amenities and finishes that we had incorporated at Littleton Station.
How many units were in that project?
That was 191 units.
And that's about Alameda in Colorado?
Mm-hmm. One block west at Alameda and Harrison and Jackson Street. Now I'm going to invite Max Scott to come up. He is a consultant that performed an opinion poll for us regarding
Good evening. My name's Max Scott. I own and operate Edipus Incorporated. We're in our 45th business year, paid my way through college. And we incorporated later in 1974. We've done about 6,000 surveys through the course of our business history. Most of our surveys are done for private applicants, for instance, on alcohol sales. But we've also had a number of municipal contracts to include Littleton in the late '70s when the massage parlor statute was passed. The city hired us to do some surveys. We were then under contract with Inglewood for I don't know how many years. We are currently, in several other jurisdictions in the state of Colorado. We're also hired to do retail, survey on retail sex outlets by the city of Kansas City, Missouri. In other words, we went in and surveyed neighborhoods to see what people thought. Did they feel safe in the neighborhood and so on and so forth. Currently, we're under contract with Westminster and Wheat Ridge. We just finished municipal contracts with Grand Junction, I'm having a brain freeze like the last guy, Centennial and Lone Tree. And our surveys have been recognized numerous times in what are called Rule 106 decisions. If I might approach, I have copies of our survey report, and then I can also put them on the overhead. We were retained by the applicant to do a survey. When we do zoning surveys and we talk to what are called parties and interests, which would be registered or qualified electors over the age of 18 in your jurisdiction, generally they want to know two things. What's the existing zoning and what's the proposal? And with that, we had a briefing sheet. And first, let me show the defined neighborhood. So whoever's doing that, thank you. This is the defined neighborhood. This is a neighborhood that's very typical, as defined by staff and your local liquor licensing authority. It's the same size neighborhood as the Walmart we recently did. We also did the Safeway Liquor License Drug Store, seems like a few years ago now. And this is the affected area in terms of what we surveyed. The orange areas are the residential areas that we surveyed, and the blue are the businesses that we surveyed. Back to the briefing sheet that I mentioned.
Excuse me. Can you put that back up and point out where the site is?
Oh, sure.
I'd like to know where that is.
Okay, I'm going to use my finger, and it's right there.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Circle with a hatch. Maybe I'll leave that there. Then we had a briefing sheet. This has been touched upon, but the surveyor, this is what I call the Ben Franklin prone con, or what's existing and what the proposal is. So the left side of the briefing sheet explains the right-by-use of the current B2 zoning, and the yellow highlighted areas are the various topics, then with more detail. For instance, it's so far away, I can't read it. Veterinary businesses, I think 50% of the site could be temporary, housing, AKA hotel, motel, all different types of parking uses, retail usage to include outlets that could be licensed, for instance, a hotel, restaurant license, or a tavern. Commonly those are sports bars and so on and so forth. You can read the detail. On the right side, there's the height limitation, the number of residential units and parking places that has now been scaled down. That's why we're here tonight. And then essentially the rest of the B2 right-by-use are restricted, with the exception of the parking for the use of the building. That gets to the survey itself. So the survey was conducted on a random sampling basis from neighborhoods throughout the defined neighborhood. That doesn't look to me like it's focused. Whoever's running that camera, maybe the camera's dying.
Can we zoom in a little bit?
Maybe I just need new glasses. Anyway, the survey was conducted with the information that was on the briefing sheet, that the density of the project, which is the main opposition, has since been reduced. Page two are the summary. We designed the survey, the neighborhood, the briefing sheet, and so on and so forth. And then based on the, our recommendations and the applicant's recommendations, we entered into an agreement letter, and the applicant has to pay in advance because we don't guarantee survey results. I learned that one a long time ago. Item number one are the total number of door knocks, which is essentially a breakdown of every door that resulted in either nobody at home, nobody at business, or somebody that was contacted. They could participate in the survey, or they preferred not to, or maybe they weren't qualified for some reason, usually age. Under qualified contacts, these are the total numbers of the survey. So we had 291 parties and interests who participated in the survey. 42 businesses favoring, 146 residences favoring. That total is 188. We had seven people that favored the project but didn't want to execute on the petition format. This was done on a format where you could sign for or against. Signatures opposing, we had zero businesses, 95 residences, and one verbal. So that accounts for the 291. Whenever we do a survey, unless there's some local rule, we have a write-in the reason for or against. Commonly, it's the protestants that write in the reason. We had 19 no-change, 21 traffic usage objections, seven height, 23 density, 10 miscellaneous reasons, two thought there'd be an increase in crime, and 13 gave no reason whatsoever. So that's the accounting of the 95 protestants. In this survey category, it shows 77, well, 67% approval for the rezoning, the applicant's proposal. And the margin of error is 8.2, so you could add that in or subtract it out, but the result is, would still be over 51%. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Is that the presentation for the applicant, or just you?
I'm, I'm done with my part of the presentation. Your turn next?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Allow me to pack up my tent.
Just to conclude, I hope that, I hope that the board recognizes that we did hear a lot of what the concerns were, and we've tried to respond to them. We have continued to work with residents who were, who were interested and willing to spend time to further hone this, and hope that you will recommend approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you step away, oh, thanks. Just a couple points of clarification for the record. Just a couple of points of clarification for the record on your elevation.
Yes.
Just so it's clear. You show a fifth floor, but you took that off, correct?
There's, if you look, that's actually, it's not a, it's not a fifth floor. It's the, it's a parapet wall.
One, two, three, four, five.
What is it?
Hello?
Okay, I'm sorry. I guess that is an old graphic, so.
Just wanted to clarify that.
It's, it's, is it in the application? It's in the application. Apologize.
So that, okay. And then if you could, just because I want, you know, full information. Could you restate the unit sizes and mix?
Yeah, I believe the average unit size is 940 square feet and the unit mix is, where we go? Sorry, 947 square foot averages with 41% being one bedroom, one bath, and 59% being two bedroom, two bath.
Thank you.
Sure.
Since I started it, does anybody on the board have any quick questions for the applicant? Well, it's fresh in our minds.
Yeah, just a quick question. Are we going to hear from those supporters you mentioned?
I hope so. I believe so. They, they are speaking with public comment. They're not speaking as part of our team.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, I, I hope so.
Mark.
Sorry.
The gentleman from EPS, he talks about being involved with the Littleton Boulevard corridor study. Civitas was the company that worked with us. I'm wondering if EPS swallowed Civitas or what here? What's going on?
Civitas was, was the prime planning consultant. We were the economic consultant for doing the market and financial work. Our, our, our company logo is on the plan under Civitas is there, so.
Okay. I never saw you during the process.
Very good. I, I think I saw you, though. But I'm not very good.
I'm younger.
I'm not very good remembering names 10 years later, so.
Face you can't forget. Let's see. I quoted from Littleton Boulevard corridor study, my opinion about the densities. I used quotes. I couldn't help but notice that you had no quotes whatsoever. Give me some concrete proof that, that I'm in error rather than just your opinion.
Well, what I would say is if, 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 if there's a difference in interpretation.
I can, I can read.
Okay.
And I was involved with the corridor study when it was done.
Okay. Our, our understanding of the, of the, where you're citing in, at the, what's identified as the sheriff's station site, the way it's stated is that 40 DU per acre could potentially generate an equal or greater value than the site's value at that current time. And so we didn't interpret that or read that as stating that that was, that was more a case study. That's how we interpret it and that's how I understand it was, it was prepared. Whereas the only place in the Littleton corridor Boulevard study is identified, where medium density is identified associated with a number is at the other location.
That was a number from Windermere to Hickory.
That's.
That was specific and I quoted it, not anywhere else along the corridor, not further east towards Littleton Boulevard or Broadway, not to the west.
And.
Am I correct?
That's where you quoted it. That's right.
Okay. I'm also here to find out who has changed their mind here. Hopefully, we hear from them tonight. I happen to see a ton of letters in opposition and, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karina?
Jan, do you have a copy of that, the Littleton corridor study that you can put up so we can look at that language? It keeps crashing on my iPad.
Do you have a print of it? It's not in there?
That's the complaint.
You have it?
You have the big one.
How come we don't get those? If one's sent to me on the stupid old machine, I'll swallow that. Where's that curry?
Where, where's, where's the 40 units?
It's right.
Or if you just want to pass it out to us, Jan?
It's under recommendations market. Let's start there.
Okay.
Where's the 40 units? Where's the comment on 40 units?
Next, you'll have to go down quite a bit. Go down to Rappo County Sheriff's Facility.
In fact, I'll note that when we initially were pointed to this, we interpreted this as stating that similarly that Hickory and Woodlawn, that that location identified 50 units an acre as medium, where this one did not, all it identified was a baseline of 40 units an acre and did not identify a maximum density.
You could have gone to the lower number versus the higher number. Okay. Can you have me read it?
Can you zero in just a little bit more?
Can we zoom a little bit more? Okay. And try to focus on the top two paragraphs. Got it?
Mm-hmm.
50 units. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're going to open it up to public comment. And as I stated earlier, well, first of all, if you're, if you're wanting to speak, I'll call your name. If you signed up, I'll call your name. But at the end, if you're not on here, I'll see if there's anybody who else wants to approach. So just because you're not on here, that only means that you get to go last. So I am going to time it at about four minutes per speaker. When the red light goes on, then you have to wrap, I'd like, I would like you to wrap it up because that'll actually be after 40, four minutes. And as I stated earlier, if we could focus on the changes, that would be great. The applicant tried to do that. Our staff tried to do that because we have heard testimony at the earlier hearing on a lot of the issues that are the items that hadn't changed. So to, to start, we have Paul Bingham. And when you approach the microphone, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Paul Bingham. My address is 236 West Delaware Circle. I was and still am appalled at the size of this thing. Approximately 500 feet long by 200 feet wide by five stories high. Doug, if I could have the projector, please. Five stories is reflected in the narrative of the application and it's reflected in their plan as shown here. Basement is number one, two, three, four, five, they're all above ground. Before I forget about it, I make clear this, the mass of residents, neighbors, whatever, that have decided to support this, that mass of people is two, one, two. Two months ago, the planning staff report on this proposal unequivocally voted against this, reasons where many primarily did not comply with the city's comm plan in Littleton Boulevard corridor study in many, many ways. Now, after 10% reduction from the 225 apartments and removing 22% of the fifth floor, slicing the huge building into two pieces and adding some setbacks to the upper floors and some slanty roofs, the city planning department is recommending approval. The fifth floor is still there on the south, the largest building. This is clearly shown in the plans as like I said. Traffic on Bima Street is a problem now and it will get much worse. The planning staff recommendation for approval is with many, many conditions. However, they've been built into their application now. Constructing a berm on top of the city ditch easement to hide one floor of the proposed building, which requires a license from the city of Inglewood, clearly seems like an unwise choice. With all due respect, the planning staff's new, new report is still not convincing. We, the people, would like something that's clearly compatible with this whole thing, period. Five and four stories is not compatible with a comm plan that says two, three, and four stories. On the table before you is our executive summary of reasons to please vote to deny this proposal to the city council. You wisely voted to recommend denial unanimously before. Now that things have not changed all that much, please vote to recommend denial again. Thank you very much for your consideration and your hard work on the planning board.
Mary Bolt?
Whoops. You're not a Mary. Unless that means you're happy.
Are you, are you representing Mary or?
Pardon?
Mary Bolt?
Mary Bolt? It's Marty Bolt.
Oh, my error. I'm the one that's.
That's right. Thank you. Marty Bolt, I live in the Stern Parkwood District, District Two.
Just state your address, please.
6187 South Windermere Way.
Thank you.
And I would like to compliment everyone on this board sincerely. I have been on previous boards and I know that the hardest working, time-consuming board is this one. And I think in many respects, it's a tougher job than the city council. The other thing that it does is that there's an opportunity for citizen flavor in decisions which are not present from the staff necessarily, and I would hope that you see this in the eyes of the citizens rather than in the eyes of the staff. Sitting here and listening to this repeat presentation by the applicant, I have been bedazzled by what I'm listening to and hearing, and I cannot believe what I'm hearing. They've danced around everything, they've regurgitated everything, and they've danced around the one thing, the one reason why under no circumstance should this be approved, and that's traffic. They have reduced the number of apartments by 10%. That means they've reduced the number of vehicles, based on their figures, which is 1.5 per apartment, by 10%. And instead of having 375 automobiles to contend with every day on a little street, filtering out of one exit in the building, down to Littleton Boulevard at a new traffic stop, we have now reduced from 375 vehicles to contend with to 348. That alone, we should be reason to kill this whole thing. It's terrible. If you can imagine 375 coming in and out of there every day and what that's going to do to that neighborhood, which is pretty nice, it's old, it's old Littleton, it's been fixed up a lot. I travel Prescott and Spotswood and Bima's every other day, and it is not going to be the same when we get through with this. I would say that there's no other consideration necessary. We're not arguing about the density, which is also terrible and brings its other problems with it, but the traffic is going to be horrible. I don't know how those people are going to stand it or how we're ever going to recover from it. And I didn't hear any constructive, I mean, I'll say maybe honest or possible method of dealing with this traffic. 348 cars. Well, at least we got rid of 37. Thank you, and I would certainly hope that you will see fit to not approve this for the city council and let them deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Sorry, I got your name wrong there.
It's Marty.
Carol Brezecchi?
I'm Carol Brezecchi and I live in the 4th District. First things first.
Can you please state your address, please?
No, I will not. There is no one at my home right now and I don't think it's wise to be saying my address over the public. I always tell you that I live in the 4th District. It has always been sufficient.
Okay.
First things first, to call this project a four-story building is bluntly hogwash. Saying it so does not make it so. In the words of the developer, the north building is a quote "true four-story building." However, the south building is not a true four-story building, but clearly five stories. Let's be very clear that we are talking about a five-story building on the south end of this project, which is the larger of the two buildings. Secondly, this is the third rendition of this project, and with each rendition, it becomes more palatable. But being more palatable doesn't make it palatable. Regarding goal number one, way back in the beginning, staff expressed concern about the 500-foot-long six-story edifice saying it lessened the prominence of the historic courthouse. The definition of prominence is the condition of standing out from something by physically projecting or being particularly noticeable. To believe that the courthouse will continue to stand out and be noticeable as required by goal number one, with this monster of a building perched upon the hill overlooking downtown, is just not believable. In fact, when he had the picture up there, it literally took me about 45 seconds to find the courthouse in that picture because all I could see was the apartment building. Staff now states that the berm and the setbacks give the appearance of several three- and four-story buildings on the western edge, but the appearance is not what is important. It is the actual height that is important, and it has only been reduced by one level for the majority of the project. It is still too tall for the area. Land use policy number three, staff believed back then that multifamily residential is an appropriate transitional use, but one of the lesser scale and building mass would better preserve the existing character of the neighborhood. Now staff claims with the removal of the fourth floor, that it will make this project more compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. It wasn't the fourth floor that was removed, it was the sixth floor, leaving a five-story building in the interior of an established neighborhood of small homes. It may be more compatible as stated by staff, but it's still not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and it does not respect the existing densities of the existing neighborhood, nor does it preserve the character. This project actually destroys the character of the neighborhood. Stern Park neighborhood goal number one requires the preservation of the unique character of the neighborhood and the general quality of life. Staff then said the scale of this proposed structure was an anomaly to the neighborhood. Now, removing the sixth story and increasing a few setbacks does not really reduce the scale of this project to the point that it fits in with this neighborhood and preserves the character. Staff says it is more compatible, but it is not compatible, and that's the standard that has to be met. As far as traffic goes, all you have to do is imagine the 250 apartments across from your home. of the neighborhood and the general quality of life. Staff then said the scale of this proposed structure was an anomaly to the neighborhood. Now, removing the sixth story and increasing a few setbacks does not really reduce the scale of this project to the point that it fits in with this neighborhood and preserves the character. Staff says it is more compatible, but it is not compatible, and that's the standard that has to be met. As far as traffic goes, all you have to do is imagine the 250 apartments across from your home, where you live, with a sign discouraging drivers to turn in the direction where there is less traffic, to know that the quality of your life in your neighborhood would be forever changed, literally destroyed. The Littleton corridor study about massing in height, the staff stated back then that the historic courthouse must remain the dominant form in this view, and the staff believed that the scale of this proposed western edifice would overpower the importance of the courthouse as a Littleton icon. Now, the floor setbacks above the second floor for the third and fourth stories along Bemis and Littleton Boulevard respect the scale of the houses along Bemis and the prominence of the courthouse. Respecting the scale of the houses along Bemis would not include a four-story building or a six-story building even with setbacks. As far as the courthouse remaining the dominant form, there's just no way it will happen with such a huge structure perched on that hill. The courthouse will fade into the background just as it did in that picture. You've heard a lot tonight about apartment buildings in the pipeline, about an economic study based on some formulas where we know from based on fact that Alta Aspen Grove did not increase the sales tax revenue for Aspen Grove. In fact, sales tax revenue for that time period went down in Littleton. Or what's on a survey? I'm skeptical of surveys. Surveys can be printed and produced to get the results that you want. It's this project that we're talking about tonight that's important. We've heard from the developer that 350 units are required to make this project profitable, and then it was 275 units, then 250, and now 225. I'm waiting for the next rendition that actually might work where this one does not.
L O, LL, LOU? We got the overhead, please?
Lou Sullivan, fifty-nine forty, South Bemis Street. I ask that you vote no on this rezon request. I've lived in this neighborhood for 33 years and love the small-town atmosphere. I would like to thank Andy Clay and Alliance for a well-presented, constructed, and designed apartment building and for trying so hard to work with this, but this is the wrong location. This revised and revised again plan is still too massive in size. Some of this you have seen before, but that's, it's still wrong. It's about one-fourth the size of downtown. This is a picture of Alexon, like, looks like another town, sitting on the edge of Littleton. That's what's going to be 500 feet of broadstone sitting on top of the hill. And that will look like the town of Littleton instead of what we've grown to love. Dividing the project into two buildings doesn't change the visual impact from downtown. Courthouse will dwarf in comparison, and I'll do the same, same thing, too. Does anybody really believe that perspective? Looks more like that? Oops.
Maybe more like that.
This project is not keeping in character with the existing neighborhood. I still wish there was a way to incorporate into whatever goes on to this property the 1950, fifty-five Groves REA building because of its historical value. This has been our signature entrance into the Stern Park neighborhood. I drew that myself, by the way. Bemis Street would not be regarded as the entrance to the park, the Rose Garden, where we have so many wonderful weddings and single-family homes that are there now but just become another entrance to another apartment building. Parking will still become an even larger problem. These pictures I took this morning, well, 1:15 today. Down to the park, a full line of cars, and there was nothing going on at the park today. And I was wondering how much of Bemis' alliance supposed to be widening. I don't think it's all the way down to the park, and that road is in terrible shape the way it is now. Between Littleton Village, Nevada Place Two, Littleton Commons, and Mineral, there are about 1,400 apartments already approved for development. They have Alta Aspen Grove, I mean Berkshire Aspen Grove, and Alexon, I mean 5151, that have already changed hands. I've heard Alliance has sold one of their properties up north. Them saying they're in it for the long term might be an empty promise. 1,200 feet for commercial area without providing any parking is another empty promise. It won't happen. Because 1.4 acres of this site cannot be built on, I feel the true density of the broadstone is more like 83 units per acre. Nevertheless, 56.8 or 51 is not 50. The Littleton corridor might even be interpreted as 43. Thank you for correcting me now and saying it's 40. 250 units or 225 is not 172. Six stories or five stories is not four stories. High density is not medium density, and as an entrance to Stern Park, it should only be low density to keep in character with the area.
Summarize, please.
This is the wrong location, the wrong time, and would be the wrong decision. Please keep your original vote of no on this rezon change.
Thank you.
Erin Aldrich, fifty-seven thirty-one South Spotswood. I've been a Littleton resident for over 30 years, and for the past 12 years, I have been a vested homeowner in the Stern Park neighborhood. I am against the rezoning and approval of this still massive and overwhelming development on this small building site. This is not the appropriate site for a development of this magnitude. Littleton is on a boom, expanding with massive apartment developments all over town, and denying this development will not negatively impact or destroy Littleton, but approving it will certainly have a negative impact for decades to come on old Littleton, its residents, its neighborhoods, and its traffic. After all the letters, emails, public comments, and appearances from concerned residents against this broadstone development and rezon, it would be a slap in the face to every Littleton resident if they are ignored by their city officials at a time when the city should represent the voices of the residents who are so heavily impacted by this proposed development. If approved, this large rental community occupying this massive building on this prominent hill overlooking downtown Littleton will become the new Littleton landmark, detracting from the historic courthouse, dwarfing downtown Littleton, and forever changing the small-town character Littleton claims and which makes it unique. By the push of a button and the recording of your vote, you will tell the Littleton citizens who have overwhelmingly opposed this massive development in their neighborhood that their homeownership roots in this community and their desire to make Littleton a desirable place to live does or doesn't matter. Please deny the approval of this rezon and massive development for this site. Thank you.
Okay. And you are not in favor. Your name? Joanne Reitcher?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
I'm Jessica Holt.
Right. You're not in favor, but not speaking.
Hi, my name is Nancy Barger. I live at sixty-one forty-nine South Bemis. I've lived in Littleton since 1966. I want to say first that I have not given a nod to the developer, so I'm not sure who those people are, but it was not me. I want to commend your last vote on the broadstone project because it was the right vote, and I hope the cosmetic changes that the developer has proposed will not detract from your position of supporting the unique essence of Littleton. I'm in favor of change. I've written two books on change, but there are certain things which do not need change but need our care and support, and that is the natural elements we are lucky enough to have in the Stern Park area. The focus has been north to traffic. Let me focus you southward. When we last met at, about broadstone, I spoke about Stern Park. No one has mentioned it since. I raise again the impact of construction, traffic, people, and parking, long-term, on the War Memorial and the Rose Garden, the park, the pea patch, the pond and wildlife, the open space. All these things add to the quality of life here in Littleton, one of the things that makes us unique. I want to be sure that these things are part of your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. It's nine o'clock. We've been going for two hours. Board, do you need a break? Ten-minute recess. We'll resume right where we left off. Bless you.
I sent you a very... Sorry about that. I didn't see it till... When's your behavior? I saw his answers. I thought it was...
If anything was focusing in and out, I thought, oh, God, I can't watch the camera there. So I can't...
Yeah, I'm glad you did. Because I think I put a... So it's, it's ten percent. It's not a cloud, but that's my cloud tip. Windermere and Hickory. It's just, you know, why, of course, you're going to be a cloud number, but I don't know how great it is what we have in this. That's why I'm on there, and I don't see this. All of this Mary's on there. It's, it's...
I don't talk, you know, I can't say anything. I have blinder in the back, so...
So, yeah, it was, it was well, well done.
Thank you for that.
It was in that one text on the...
It was in your staff report, right? Was the reference to...
Yeah.
It's a hard study. Four stories. Architecture, is there heading architecture?
I have your, I just want mine to... I have my... From that text here. I have my people architecture. Stepping up and hide away from the street. This is in, um... This is in design guidelines common to both the sheriff department side and the community center side. That's for the station, so it's these two sites.
Are there references to four stories? Is it conflict with the reference to three stories?
Well, except they've got this diagram back here that has four stories on there in the diagram, so it's, yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, it's just like...
I think it says three stories stepping back.
It does. It says three stories and stepping back, so stepping, so you can go four.
It doesn't say a max or a...
It doesn't say starting at three stories stepping back. No greater than.
Okay, if we can begin to filter back in. Waiting for our planning director.
The boss.
Stand until we have to sit.
Stand until there's a boss.
Stand until...
Do we need him? I don't think so.
Editorial comment?
We're going to continue with the public comment with Charlene Williams.
Charlene Williams, eight-fifty West Powers Drive, again on benefit of District Two. This building is in District One, but it is right on the edge of District Two. It will use all of our services. It will add to all of our problems. This building will destroy District I think we've added enough apartments at this time. By the way, the plan to me looks like a big box. I could care less how long the roof is going to last on this project. I care about the long-term effect on the area, 10, 20, 30 years down the road. I recommend that this project be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen Gray or Curry? Gray.
My name's Colleen Gray. I live at 3080 West Prenus Avenue, Littleton, 80123. I'm in District One. I live across the golf course here, and I live within walking distance of downtown Littleton. I've shopped here many, many years and helped the local businesses, little shops along the main street. I'm here to ask you to turn down this zoning. I question the sales taxes they projected that they would bring in. I don't know where they think they're going to spend their money, just the three little, four little blocks down there in Littleton. I see them getting on the light rail and going downtown Denver and shopping due to the projected income of the people, you know. Also, I question the size of the units. My condo is 980 square feet. It's a one-bedroom with a little loft, and it has skylights, so it gives it more room. I can't imagine renting anything smaller than mine for $1,500. And the one-bedroom, one-bass on a lot smaller. I drive around up and down Littleton Boulevard, like I said, and I looked at that old courthouse, and then I tried to picture this behemoth sitting across the street from it. And when I saw the picture, I was appalled. I saw the Broadstone at Cherry Creek. I have a client that has a nice townhouse just west of there, and it dwarfed his beautiful little brick townhouse. So I just think they're ugly. And it fits Alamo and Colorado, but it doesn't fit Littleton. There again, I don't think it's compatible with the history, the preservation, the historic value, the quality of life. It just does not fit. I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Harris.
Good evening. I'm Betty Harris. I live at 6281 South Cedar Street. I was very interested in the survey, especially with the map, because in that area between Gallup and Bannock and Littleton Boulevard and Shepherd, I got 135 signatures on a petition about rezoning. When I showed them the map or the picture of their plan, and they said, hell, no, we don't want it in here. Three of them said they'd sign that survey. One of them said he couldn't imagine what he was thinking, and all but one of them signed my petition. Were I a city planner, I would want to plan out for at least one generation ahead of the present. We seem to be getting hype from developers that suggest that our city is short of 20 to 40-year-olds who are making $75,000 a year, and that building, apartment buildings, will bring them all to Littleton. Economists have a persistent fear that the millennials or Generation Y have entered a permanently lower earnings and savings trajectory than their predecessors. Even if the generation recovers, even if it ends up wealthier than the one before it, the scars will be deep and long-lasting. Lisa Khan, a labor economist at the Yale School of Management, studied the earnings of men who left college and joined the workforce during the deep recession of the early 1980s. Unsurprisingly, she found that the higher unemployment rate upon graduation, the less graduates earned right out of school. But those workers never really caught up. The effects are still present 15 to 20 years later, she said. They'll never make that money back. She started comparing recent graduates during the recent recession with recent graduates in the 1981-82 recession, and she said that the initial wage losses are comparable and the trend looks set to repeat. She says, if anything, these guys may experience something worse. City Council's already approved more apartment units than this city has historically been able to absorb in any reasonable period of time. Approving more simply worsens the problem, and we will be stuck with too many apartments for the rest of this century and into the next. A city with more than 50% of the budget, where it's built on retail sales tax, will have significantly less revenue than is needed to provide services to more people, especially if we replace commercial space with residential. What does it cost the city for each new added citizen? No one on the city council has been able to come up with a decent answer. But crowding more people together in small spaces makes for unhappy and disgruntled bed settles. It can only cost the city more and more, and this is a permanent problem. We will have either a mass of apartments that we don't have residents for, or a mass of residents crammed into smaller plots where there are too much in each other's personal space. It's not about parking spaces, but about personal spaces that creates distress that leads to anger and crime. Not only will renters be in everyone, in each other's personal space, they would be taking up personal space of a lot of the current residents. One would want to ask the planning board how many of them are making six-figure incomes, or if you have any grown children that are. Will adding more apartments bring in more children to the schools? Or will Generation X delay having children because of their financial situation? If we ignore our own rules and our own guidelines, we make our city a disaster, and we'll be the laughingstock of future generations. The citizens of this little town do not want to be the high-density capital of Colorado or any other state. Please, vote against this proposed development on behalf of the citizens themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. And you're not going to speak, but you're against the project. Roger Peterson is not going to speak, but is against the project. Ben Burkett.
My name is Ben Burkett, and I live across the street from the proposed site at 5730 South Bemis Street. I live in an historic home that was built in, well, there's two dates, late 1800s or early 1900s. So that should help put it in perspective how this project should come into characteristics of the neighborhood. I changed my whole speech I was going to give you tonight because of a few things that have come up. Even with the changes, I'm hearing a consistent message. We must approve this project because of the economic benefits to Littleton. City staff reports support that, as well as the businesses. I want to see our businesses thrive and flourish. I shop there because of that. But it's not the only reason we should pass this. There's a key land use policy that I saw, I think it was in the Stern Park or is in the comp plan, goal-wide general land use, and it was left out of the staff report to you. And what that one was, is about the developments, new developments should respect existing densities and land uses of the neighborhood. The development as proposed, 50 units, or even what has been suggested, 40 units, if it's in coherence, in compliance with the Littleton Boulevard study, are still too great for the surrounding densities. Surrounding density is R3. My wife will go into more detail of that, so I won't go to that here. So I just want to say, hey, is the economic benefit really the only reason we're going to go for this? I don't think we should. Because of that, I implore you to vote no. Additionally, you know, I'm a little hesitant with the survey results as well that were provided. I spoke at length with one of the individuals who was doing the survey, and there's a flaw in it, as far as I can tell. The survey was a mile radius around from the site, which means it included areas outside of Littleton. If any of those individuals were for this project or even opposed to the project, they could not come here and have their voices heard. Therefore, why should they be, their numbers be included in that survey? Additionally, what I heard in that survey was that the further out you were from the location, like the one mile, more people were for it. But as you came in closer, people were against it. The other item is, is not necessarily fault of the surveyors, but the survey was taken on, I believe, over a weekend. I know I was caught on my way out on a Sunday afternoon, and it was a gorgeous weekend. So being Coloradans, we're outdoors on the weekends. So I hesitate to, much cred to be put into that survey itself. However, if, something I'd like to add is, if you do feel like you must approve this, is thankful to Lou for showing her pictures of the parking up and down Bemis Street today. There's nowhere to park. There's light rail users, riders. There I have karate locations at both ends of the street. And additionally, if this project comes through, there'll be a cafe. It has no parking. Where are these people going to park? Where am I going to park? I can't park in my own, front of my own house right now. So I would implore you to, if you must approve it, at least add some sort of mitigation to that effect. Coming back to something else that has worried me a little bit is the, it has become known that some citizens, local citizens, agree to this project. I was part of those, that group, small group, there's about six of us who met with Alliance, and I appreciate their time and efforts. They have made an effort to listen. So thank you. I appreciate it. Those two individuals in this group who I know, they have their own reasons for going with it. That's fine. But I do not want you to put extra credibility on them because they have swayed their vote or changed their vote. There are plenty of other people here who have spoken against it. That's all I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you. Brenda O'Connell.
Hello. Brenda O'Connell, 5791 South Spotswood Street, Littleton resident for over 50 years. Again, to save time, I'll just go ahead and read for my notes. I'm against the rezoning and the proposed development of this massive high-density apartment complex. There may be a place for such a development, but not on the corner of Bemis Street. This development, sitting on a prominent hill, will forever change the historic downtown Littleton area and drastically degrade the character and quality of the surrounding neighborhoods. The massiveness and high density of this development continues to violate the Stern Park neighborhood, plan, goals, policies. It will not preserve the unique character of the neighborhood and quality of life aspects, nor the quiet atmosphere. It will not improve transportation facilities and traffic controls that are necessary to improve safety and to provide good traffic circulation within the neighborhood. Instead, this development, on a daily basis, will overwhelm and overburden the neighborhoods with unnecessary traffic congestion, including noise, light, and air pollution. Land use policy two states that emphasis in the decision-making process be placed on the preservation of the neighborhood as a sound, desirable residential area. This development will not preserve the neighborhood as a sound, desirable residential area. Instead, it will change and degrade the quality of life of the residents in the neighborhoods, even affecting the value of their homes that many residents have remodeled and improved for the enrichment and character of old Littleton. Traffic concerns, traffic heading west on Littleton Boulevard and waiting to turn south onto Bemis Street, will be sitting in the left turn lane on Littleton Boulevard. This left turn lane can only accommodate two cars. Other cars wanting to turn onto Bemis will back up and obstruct the active traffic lane heading west by backing up cars to Spotswood, Prescott, or Crocker. What will happen next is that drivers heading west on Littleton Boulevard will choose to bypass the bottleneck and turn their cars north down Spotswood, Prescott, Crocker, or Louden, to Powers, and then go west past the Buck Center onto Court Place, then get back onto Littleton Boulevard, bypassing the bottleneck and proposed traffic light at Bemis. This traffic, now rerouting itself around the Buck Center, will impact adults and children using the Buck Center with overflow traffic. Or drivers to avoid the westbound bottleneck traffic on Littleton Boulevard, they may choose to exit Santa Fe Drive and take Alamo to Littleton Boulevard, adding to the eastbound congestion, which now affects the pedestrians crossing on the bridge over the railroad tracks. The only way Alliance plans to increase the width of the sidewalk over the bridge is to take some footage from the eastbound Alamo traffic lane. Now we have congested traffic lanes narrowing over the bridge up against pedestrians on the sidewalk, which is also dangerous to the blind community using the sidewalk. Drivers might also avoid Littleton Boulevard altogether during the rush and choose to take Santa Fe to Church to Lake Tabemis, or take Windermere to Lake Tabemis, now impacting the quiet residential neighborhoods with additional traffic noise and air pollution. This massive development will not solve a need for the city or for the existing residents. Instead, this development opens a can of worms for the city and its vested home-only community to deal with. The developers back here tonight because they feel they have made enough changes to satisfy the planning board. It is still a massive, high-density apartment development. Basically, it will be a city within a city on a very small and prominent site. It will have only one entry-exit point onto the property off a residential street and literally no control over the traffic it will generate throughout the neighborhoods. In closing, you can take a 150-pound dog, shave it, and it's still a 150-pound dog. Even with their changes, this development is too massive and high-density. Please deny this rezone. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah Burkett. Hi there. I'm Leah Burkett, 5730 South Bemis Streets. I feel like tonight we're looking at essentially the same project as we looked at two months ago, and I've been trying to still reconcile it to the comp plan and the Littleton Boulevard corridor study. And whether it's 50 units per acre or 40 units per acre that that study recommends, either way, it's based on 2.9 acres, which is the one piece of this entire land parcel. As you know from your packets, this entire project site is composed of three parcels.
Basically, it will be a city within a city on a very small and prominent site. It will have only one entry-exit point onto the property off a residential street and literally no control over the traffic it will generate throughout the neighborhoods. In closing, you can take a hundred and fifty-pound dog, shave it, and it's still a hundred and fifty-pound dog. Even with their changes, this development is too massive and high-density. Please deny this rezone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Leah Burkett, 5730 South Bemis Streets. I feel like tonight we're looking at essentially the same project as we looked at two months ago. And I've been trying to still reconcile it to the Comp Plan and the Littleton Boulevard corridor study. And whether it's fifty units per acre or forty units per acre that that study recommends, either way, it's based on 2.9 acres, which is the one piece of this entire land parcel. As you know from your packets, this entire project site is composed of three parcels. So the grand total of the three parcels is 4.48 acres, and at 225 units, that puts us at the fifty units per acre. However, parcel number four is full of easements and burdens. It basically is completely unbuildable. So I would say that it's not really even fair to include that in the density calculation. And if you take that out, you're looking at a density closer to seventy-three units per acre. The surrounding properties at R3 and the transitional zoning is 6.7 and 21.8. PDR has no recommended maximum density, but the maximum R5 is 43.6 units per acre. So this makes it a significantly higher-density project. And also, the problem I have with parcel four, that's an overhead view of the thing in parcel four. Because of the Inglewood City ditch there, it says that there will be no large trees allowed to be planted. So you're going to see a line of buildings with no trees or screening, really, to break it up. I think it's going to be even more prominent. Here is a picture. From Prince Street, that's the building now, one story. You can see there's a lot of nice trees there. Those will obviously be torn down. This building would be pushed forward and just essentially be right in your face when you're sitting there at the corner of Alamo and Prince. So the berm also may not even be possible because of that water line there. And I think just the lack of trees would be a really big bummer. The second objection I have to this project is, I don't think that widening the bridge along Alamo is a good idea at all. It puts pedestrians and cars even closer together. Already, it's kind of an unpleasant walk down to the light rail. I walk that often. And I think that narrowing what has been dubbed as the spine of Littleton Boulevard is a bad idea. And when we're talking about our long-term vision, putting some bike lanes and other things in there, you're kind of eliminating that possibility by taking away more of the road. I have a video here of what the commute is like on the Alamo Bridge and... Let's see if this works. I just think being four feet closer to these cars would be frightening. My last thought would be, as it relates to transit-oriented development, if you go up and down the light rail line, there are huge, high-density developments at practically every stop. And I think, you know, Littleton has a unique character, and we could have a unique transit-oriented development that just isn't to this enormous scale, maybe just something lower-density so that people have an alternative to live on a transit line and not live in a high-density, high-rise apartment. So I think it would be great to have a different, lower-density alternative, all for residential at this site, but not at this intensity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, I think it's Garrity.
Garrity. Mike Garrity, 5675 South Crocker Street. I'd like to start with the survey and work backwards. Question for the volunteers here: Would you rather be at home, or would you rather be here at this meeting? Or would you rather see a veterinary movie theater, or hotel, or an apartment complex at this proposed site? You know, it's really not too hard to figure out how those survey results came about. Unlike most of the old-timers around here, we moved here a month ago to Crocker Street. In looking for houses, we couldn't get over how many multifamily housing units there are as we drove around Colorado looking for a place to live. I ride the rails to downtown, and as the last speaker just mentioned, there's, it's like, what's the deal? There's one of these things at every train stop, and they're just right on the train stop. And it's how many of these things can we put, you know, because the developers want to maximize the number of units that they have so that they can maximize everything else. So it's like, how many of these units can we cram into the space? All right. And then Andy said that he thinks this project strikes a balance between the homeowners and, you know, the goal. Well, I'll tell you what, we just spent, we just paid over $600,000 for our house. And I'll tell you what, if I had knowledge that this project was even dreamt about, there's no way in HU double-toothpicks that we would have made an offer on this house. Absolutely no way. And right after we moved in, I got a nice postcard from a realtor who put out the, you know, the statistics. And she said that the average sale price of a house in Littleton recently was $230,000. Okay? Well, while I was sitting there listening to Andy talk, I'm in the bond business, so I did a little quick mortgage payment calculator. And, you know, if you have $75,000 average income, you can put 20% down on a $230,000 house at figure four and a half percent interest on a thirty-year loan, and your payment is 1,300 bucks. Why am I going to live in an apartment if I can buy an average house in Littleton, an average-priced house in Littleton, for $230,000? If, you know, why wouldn't you buy the house and get the tax deduction instead of throwing away your rent money? Okay, so it's all these Rosie projections. The Rosie projections got us the dot-com bubble. They got us the housing bubble, which became the subprime housing bubble. And now you've seen BlackRock going up and, BlackRock going and buying up all kinds of houses because they're going to rent them to people who can't afford to buy a house. Okay? That didn't work out so well, so now BlackRock is trying to get rid of all these houses they bought. Well, the next bubble is all these rental units. And you've already approved a bunch of projects, rental projects. I don't see any reason to approve this one. And what I don't think anybody's said, my cursory understanding of the Littleton corridor thing is that there's not supposed to be anything on Littleton Boulevard bigger than the three stories. And this thing's four stories. And unless I'm missing something, that should be the first strike, that this should not, even, you know, if you think that it should be approved, it certainly shouldn't be of fourth floors on Littleton Avenue. I hope you disapprove the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan is opposed, but is not going to speak. Is that correct? Garrity?
Yeah, that would be my wife's.
Thank you for getting my name right. I appreciate that.
I try.
I'm sorry?
I don't always get it right, but I try.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the planning board for its time and effort. This is, I gotta believe, a pretty thankless job for you, all of you. I also want to thank Alliance for demonstrating the ability to make changes. I think that this is a very high-profile project, that, more high-profile, and more important than most projects than we talk about here at the planning board, and it deserves greater care. This is a gateway property. It's going to leave an impression of our town on thousands of people, people who drive through, people who ride the rails through. I'm opposed to Broadstone, but not because I'm opposed to putting a development there. I'm opposed to it because the process for going through this seems very painful to me and fairly opaque. There's an absence of information and structured procedure. It always feels like, when we're at these meetings, everyone is speaking to a moving target. And the staff gets the report the night before, or two nights before, and that just seems very difficult to me. The staff even reported or commented today that they were challenged by bouncing guidelines. They didn't say from who those guidelines were, but they were challenged by bouncing guidelines. The notification of changes in the plans have been unclear. There is a questionable timing in my mind of city council hearings on this. They seem to have a propensity to want to time their hearings around holidays. Developers' presentation last time raised a lot of questions. For example, what is the style of the architecture? That is unknown. They said that they would change it however we wanted it, but historically, once a project gets approved, it doesn't get changed to suit the city any further. In fact, it gets changed to suit developers. I recall the Littleton Station condominium development, and that, the facade of that came out quite a bit different, at least from what was shown to me as a prospective buyer. Just some other observations: Parking for one and a half vehicles seems inadequate for a luxury demographic. Higher-income demographic people have more cars than everybody else. They also have more guests, and we don't know how many guest spaces there are at this time. It's also seeming to be a mixed-use property if there's going to be a 1,200-foot retail or cafe space without provision for parking. These are all just more questions than necessarily problems, they may be resolution to them. I still don't get the traffic flow on Bemis. They talked about a prohibition of northbound in the last meeting this week. They said they were going to distract, or discourage, southbound traffic on Bemis. I'd just like to know which it was. Has anybody done any evaluation of light rail capacity for this? As one who rides the train periodically from here to Denver in the morning, I'll say that train's pretty crowded. Can we launch another 300 people or 200 people onto it on a daily basis? I'll bet you there's going to be a lot more people driving than we think today. Probably some of them will be driving back south to Mineral because you can get on there and get a seat. Alliance made a commitment for five years. It seems insufficient. Our commitment to this building is going to be a lot longer than five years. I've heard lots of reports of errors and changewaters. We can't even seem to describe, define whether there's a fifth floor in this project or not. I am unclear. I have, I was shocked to learn that we have problems policing, and we're contemplating policing present housing now, and we're contemplating a project of this magnitude which we probably don't have the capacity to inspect and maintain, particularly one that's in a focal point of our community. I just, just think there are so many questions, and the process has been so intense, that we all ought to back off a little bit, think about it. I would love to see something good go in there, because I think it would be a real win for our city. But I also would like to see something with perhaps a little bit more thought and time taken in it, and a little bit more openness and transparency in the review process. So now you understand why I'm opposed to Broadstone.
Thank you.
I hope you support that.
Hello, my name is Kathy Messenger. I live at 5743 Shasta Circle, and I have been a member of the Littleton community since 1989. So in some respects, I still feel like I'm a newcomer. The reason that I'm here tonight, even though we are at quite a late hour of the evening, is just to implore you to cast a vote against this particular project. I don't think that this is Littleton. Littleton is a quaint little area. Let's try not to make it something that we're not. After these hired guns leave, all of the unintended consequences that come with a development of this magnitude, we will be living with, our children will be living with, grandchildren, et cetera, et cetera. I was really very surprised when they mentioned about actually lengthening the, or widening the sidewalk on the bridge over on Alamo, and decreasing the lane a little bit. And I thought to myself, oh my gosh, the blind school is not that far away. How dangerous is that? I know that one person made a comment and touched on it, but it really has not been brought to the forefront here tonight. We have a lot of people that attend the blind school, and we've all seen them at the different crosswalks, and I just think that that's a dangerous proposition, and I would encourage you to really consider that as you're evaluating. I just don't understand how there is anything more to really be said. Everyone else has been so eloquent this evening, and has given you statistics, and has given you photographs, and videos, and pictures, and maps, and, and I think that at the end of this evening, I really encourage you to make the right decision and vote no on this particular project. It's not right for our city, and it's not right for, for this community at this time. Thank you so much, and I appreciate your work.
Thank you. Joel Gross-Hosru, Hozru, 6000 South Bemis. Oh, I'm sorry, doesn't want to speak, but he's against the project. I should read the whole thing. Laurie Schultz is also against the project, but not speaking. John Schultz is also against the project, not speaking.
I'm Joseph Devlin, 5870 South Bemis. I live right next to Stern Park, in the Stern Park neighborhood. My folks bought the house, or built the house, in 1951. I grew up there as a little boy. I've seen all kinds of changes. I like Stern Park neighborhood. That's why I'm living there now after my folks passed away. To build a monster apartment house on this corner, I can't believe it. It's a monster. When I went to school, Littleton Public Schools, I learned how to count. One, two, three, four, five. That's five stories, counting the basement, what they say is basement. What I really want to speak about is the traffic going down Bemis. Bemis Street is narrow as it is. Park a car in front of our house, park a car across the street for people that like to look at the rose garden, that leaves really just one lane for traffic going north or south to get through. That's not enough. People in this apartment building, they won't be able to get out on Littleton Boulevard. They're going to, when they leave, they're going to turn right and head south on Bemis. They're going to go down to Lake, Lake to Windermere, Lake to Prince, and get out that way. This is going to create quite a traffic flow up and down Bemis Street, especially during rush hours in the morning and rush hour in the evening. It's going to be unsafe. People don't always obey the speed limit. They speed up and down Bemis. And now we're creating another problem. I urge you to vote no on this project. Thank you.
Kate Delay is against, but not speaking. Dale Hillborn is against, but not speaking.
That's this word for Leah, I'll try a bit. Pam Chaborn, 5402 South Nevada Street, in southeast elevation from Alamo, it's five stories. It's easy to count. A basement condition is still a floor. So let me note and echo what many people have said. There's been many revisions to this proposal. The scope has been substantially reduced, the height from six-story... The scope has been substantially reduced, the height from six stories, the height from six stories to five, occupancy from, at the beginning, over 300 to 225. The expansion of the floodplain was dropped. The setbacks were increased. There's many other mitigations. And that is great. I really appreciate the consideration that developers and the owners have given to our community. This is a good builder and a good building. In fact, it's, to me, the best building of the whole batch that have been proposed, but not on this site. And I'm just going to echo, what are the impacts to the city? Glenn said he feels some things, he thinks we benefit. You could say that the mix of architectural styles adds diversity. Feeling, thinking, and could saying are not quantified assessments of what the impacts are on the city. And we need to know that. In fact, I insist on it. And I hope that you, as the planning board, demand this for future considerations. And I've summarized here: land use, city services, city infrastructure, city management, the budget and schedule, and quality of life, employment, traffic congestion, crime, nuisances, noise, light, trespass. Those have to be integrated and presented to you and also to us. And I also want to mention the marketing discriminator in the Denver metro area. These kind of apartments are being built everywhere. Lots of people have observed this as you drive up and down Broadway and Alameda, I-25 corridor. What is our market discriminator in the Denver metro area in 10, 25 years? If we succumb to this building boom of high-density apartments, we will lose our discriminator. And I have to tell you, I want us to keep that market discriminator. We have an economic development department. And they should be talking about this, not me. But I'm convinced that if we add this in our downtown, our Carnegie downtown, with the courthouse and the library at either end of four blocks, a small town, we will lose our downtown in 25 years. And that's our discriminator. Let's keep it. Let's not destroy it. So the project still doesn't comply with Littleton Boulevard corridor study. It's the retail spine for the surrounding residential area. The two-to-three-story height limit along the entire street benefits us all. And I believe that this density of housing at this site will harm other residential and commercial development on Littleton Boulevard. Lots of people have said that. I believe it will destroy the character of downtown because its character and its mass don't fit. It doesn't complement the scale of the courthouse. And as Ben mentioned, there's no transition to the surrounding single-family homes. You can't go from five-story, 225 monolithic development to single-family homes and expect that to last. Visitor parking is inadequate. There are 20 spots for 225. There's 80-some single units here. And they're going to use the 20 visitor parking places alone, not to mention the 162 bedrooms. The emphasis is to preserve the neighborhood as a sound residential neighborhood. No, that's not the emphasis. And it doesn't do that. So it fails on both counts. The Cherry Creek Development, I think Colleen mentioned this. I drove around there. And there's a house, single-family home on the corner that's rented. And then there are those two-story townhomes on the west side. And the Cherry Creek Development dwarfs them. And then over in the corner, on the other side, there's a house with a Big Four sale sign. And that summarizes the impact of this. And I agree with the poll survey results too. Like Betty, I got petitions. And eight, eight to nine percent of the people, or out of 10 of the people I talked to are against this. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Richard Camp is against the project, not going to speak. Patrick Sullivan, against the project, not speaking. Cora Devlin, against the project, not speaking. Thomas O'Brien.
I guess I'm one of the lucky ones that he commented on, the two or three that are in favor of it. I am Thomas O'Brien. I reside at 5652 South Cedar Street. I guess I'm wondering why some don't have to give their address, neither, you know? But that's the way it goes. I sit here and listen, you know, tonight or whatever. To me, this feels like a mob mentality here, the way we shake our hands and all that because we can't clap or whatever. But it just seems kind of funny. And I don't know about the planning board itself. You know, it seems like a lot of you are angry, you know, when you sit here. And, you know, I don't know if this is like just a token hearing or what, because you had to, because it was remanded back to you. But, you know, people upset with the computers, things happen, you know? We have to go along with it. I guess previously, somebody was fired because they thought we were wasting their time, you know? And I think it's, you guys are volunteers, from what I understand. I would like to, you know, just see how you guys are selected, you know, and why you want to do this. Because, you know, I'm not sure if you're here for the citizens and for the city, or how that really works. You know, what you're, what you're here for. But anyway, I've been around Littleton, you know, since 1960. So 53 years, I graduated from Littleton High. And I think the city and the staff is doing a great job. And they come here with a recommendation to a volunteer board, and they vote seven to zero against it. So I guess I don't get how that all works. I guess you guys are going along with the mob. And they might not, might not like to hear that, but that's the way I look at it. I think, you know, things do change. And they're, you know, that's, those are some of my words, change and progress. And people have mentioned these sites along the light rail, whatever. And yes, these are very variable sites, and some of them are smaller than others. And I can't see something small going on this site. And the people that do live around this area, or whatever, I think the guy that bought his $600,000 house maybe should have done a little bit more research. You know, what going on around the neighborhood? And if he says he wouldn't have bought it if he'd known about this. People across the street, you know, I'm not sure how long they've been there, but they knew what this was owned for, and that something like this could happen someday. And you're going to have to deal with traffic and parking when you've got a situation like this. And I think sooner or later, something is going to be built there. And I was talking to a lady earlier. And I think they would rather have something like this than a 24-hour McDonald's. But, so... I would like to see more change in Littleton. I mean, I love the hometown charm and all that. It's all nice and everything. But I would like to see some projects, and this is a first-class project. I mean, they're talking about building it to lead standards, you know, energy-efficient, and the way it's built. And I thought it was kind of funny. Somebody said, when the hired guns go home, you know? I don't know that the hired guns are professionals trying to explain, you know, what they're trying to do here, whatever. I hear continued mention about the courthouse. The historic courthouse is not going anywhere. It's still going to be there. And I don't know what the big deal about a behemoth being next to it. The courthouse is still there. I see it every time I drive up and down Littleton Boulevard. And I'll see it still with a nice, you know, residential complex next to it. So I'm not sure where that all comes from. I've heard, you know, you know, that it's a wrong location, wrong time, construction, traffic, parking, time and time again. When you've got a project like this, you're going to do, you know, have things like that. To me, that's a good thing, you know, because it means something's happening, you know? And when you don't have traffic and parking issues, you know, something's not happening. And I guess that's what people want. They just want to have their, you know, small little house and stuff like that. But, so, I'm in favor of something like this. And, you know, I don't think that, I think this between, you know, I think this is a token hearing, you know? And I'm going to go home probably and watch you guys vote. And I don't expect to see much difference than I did last time, so. But thanks for your time.
Thank you. Dan Messer is against the project, not speaking. Gary Johnson?
Good evening. Gary Johnson at 5753 South Prescott Street. I'm a traffic engineer. And I'm one of those that was opposed to this project, but now I'm supportive. But to be fair, I want to tell you why, and there's two primary reasons. One, because I'd like to continue dialogue with this developer. Secondly, I believe that this is an appropriate use for the site, particularly when you consider alternative land uses and the trip generation that that may produce. I've commented on the traffic impact studies that was prepared previously, and don't want to repeat all of those comments. However, there still remain about three major issues that I think you need to consider. The first is a quick one about trip generation. Although the trip generation recognizes 225 housing units, it does not address the commercial space that's being proposed. So I believe that needs to be corrected. The second issue is the traffic on Bemis. And you've heard a number of comments to this effect. The new study that was produced does distribute traffic to South Bemis based on recognizing the structured and unstructured or nonstructured disincentives that the conditions require of the proposal. However, the site generation, the site trip generation does increase the traffic in the AM about 45% on Bemis, and 25% in the PM. And on a daily basis, somewhere in the order of 25 to 30% increase in traffic on Bemis. So hold that for a minute, and consider that the study also suggests that a warrant has not been met for the signal. However, a signal is being provided at Littleton Boulevard. I believe that that signal will induce traffic. It will make it easier for people to access Littleton Boulevard from Bemis, and will increase, again, traffic on Bemis. And so the traffic study does not address any impacts or mitigations to those impacts, which I believe needs to be corrected. The third and the last issue is the pedestrian traffic on Alamo. The study did provide an estimate of about 26 peak pedestrians on the sidewalk. It doesn't address how many pedestrians are already on that sidewalk. And although it does provide these estimates, it does not provide a recommendation as to the width of that sidewalk. You compare the ped traffic on the Alamo Bridge and the width of that sidewalk to the ped traffic on the Main Street Bridge and the width of that sidewalk, and you can see that the Alamo is significantly inadequate. I would ask that the planning commission consider the ped demand on that sidewalk, and consider a width more conducive to both the pedestrian and biker and blind community that uses that, which approaches as much as 10 feet wide. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your attention.
Thank you. Doug Kreenick is against the project, not speaking. Mike Gasper? Mike Gasp? Okay, he didn't indicate which way he was leaning. Ray Flesher is against the project, not speaking. Virginia Camp, against the project, not speaking. Alcott Pinkston, against the project, not speaking. Francis Pearson?
Good evening. I'm Fran Pearson. I live at 1950 West Littleton Boulevard. That is in the Littleton Station condominiums. We own a unit in there in Littleton Station. I was first, presented this proposal last November, and had been consistently against the proposal up until about a month ago. And part of that is because I had been working with the developer, essentially trying to get concessions out of them. I believe that the harder the political process, and also the business process, because I own a business for many years, is compromise. And that you need to work with people and try and find compromises, and something that will work for both sides, that is palatable for both. Having worked with Alliance over the last six months, and constantly pushing them, which, and I pushed them pretty hard, as Andy Clay will tell you. And I found that they were very receptive and very good at listening. And, you know, when we made proposals that perhaps they could break up the mass of the building so that it wasn't so monolithic, they responded by breaking it into two buildings. When we suggested maybe that they could give us some more setbacks and that sort of thing. They were very good at listening and responding to our requests. And I realized at some point that we had to find a common meeting ground. And I think that we, after the last planning session, in which I testified against this proposal, we had another meeting with them. And at that meeting, they were very considerate of our, some of our requests, one of which was a lessening of the height of the project, which is now set at 49 feet. And also, the, it's a substantial reduction from the original height, and also the original massing. So at that point, I kind of had to make a decision. It was a difficult decision for me, because I had really been working with the neighbors against this project for a long time. But I finally decided that it was, we were at that point where we were so close that, you know, it wasn't worth quibbling over lesser details. And I told Andy that I would support the project because of their ability to listen, and also because I felt that as a developer, they were of a very high quality, that they're proposing a very high-quality project. Something that I think will not diminish the gateway into downtown Littleton, but will provide, I think, not only reasonable, but an attractive entryway into the downtown area. One of the things that the architect is proposing is to reflect some of the design features and that sort of thing, the architectural features, in the courthouse so that it ties in, and kind of create a counterbalance, you know, to both the courthouse as well as the Buck Center. So I feel like that they've been very good at working with us as neighbors, and that we're confident that they will continue to work with us as neighbors as we refine this design process even more. And for those reasons, and just the fact that I have a lot of confidence at this point in Alliance Development, I would like to support this project and would urge you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Norm Brown?
I'll need the overhead as well. Good evening, board, and thank you. For this, I have the same theme that I did...
You mind stating your address?
I'm sorry. I'm in District 1, 6081 South Spotswood. And for the earlier reference to 150-pound dogs, we have a couple. They are not shaved. So anyone thinking of Burger, of going over there to Burgl, would be well advised not to. The thing that, the big dog in the room that everybody seems to ignore is heavy rail. Yes, we have light rail, transit-oriented development, light rail transit, and so on and so forth. This is in Quebec. This looks like a war zone. This is where 72 tank cars of crude oil were parked. 47 people perished. The casualties, injuries, and the expenditure to fight this were obviously remarkable. This was earlier this year. In Littleton, tank cars. You probably recognize the Road of Depression and the Bridge. tank cars, you probably recognize the railroad depression and the bridge. This was sulfur dioxide leaking a few years ago. Fortunately, not toxic. Fortunately, didn't explode. Burlington Northern Santa Fe is the carrier that operates through here. I had pictures before of the coal train derailing. Fortunately, there was nothing adjacent when that derailed, other than the light rail. The engineer, the driver for the light rail, received an award for managing to stop the train in time before it ran into the derailed coal cars. About a month ago, Saturday, the twenty-seventh of July, parked. Now, there weren't seventy-two cars there, I don't believe, but there was well over a dozen. They extended up to basically where the, to the north, where the railroad depression comes out of the ground and extended under Prince Street. There were a few other mixed, it's a mixed consist, other cars, hopper cars and some things mixed in, but predominantly these tanker cars. I don't know what was in them. I don't think any of us do, but they were parked there. And this is, of course, while train, while coal trains pass adjacent to this. You'll also, you'll recognize the bridge over Alamo there. This is very close to where they want to put these people. Before I spoke to you as a former member of this board and said, "I wouldn't put any residential use on this property, nor would I put a business use that involved children, like a daycare or a school or something like that." Burlington Northern Santa Fe, this was ethanol, I believe. This was in Montana. Flavna, Montana. One reason for rezoning is a manifest error in the current zoning. I think to rezone this and allow residential use here would be a manifest error. Glenn spoke earlier about one of the things in the, in one of the plans, I don't remember if it was the corridor plan or downtown, a healthful living environment. If you're anything like we are, although we have the big dogs, we tend to open the windows at night, bring in the cool air. If these people are living there and sleeping there, while something leaks, something explodes, it's going to be a nightmare that looks like the war zone. All I can think of is for the benefit of the Burkets and some of the other neighbors, if this is built, they have a silver lining in the fact that there will be two-hundred-and-fifty units of cannon fodder between them and the railroad depression. I didn't mean it to be funny.
Thanks. Christine Diorio.
Good evening. My name's Christine Diorio. I live at five-six-five-two South Spotswood Street, just across from the rec center. My husband and I purchased our home just about two months ago, and we considered moving to Park Hill, to Wash Park, to Congress Park. But we chose Old Town Littleton specifically because it's an authentic town with a rich character that hasn't been diluted. We also saw that people were investing money by restoring and improving the old homes in the neighborhoods and that property values were on the rise. So while I believe that development in Littleton can be a very positive thing, I think that this project is simply not the right fit for this location. And I believe it will jeopardize the very things that make this town attractive to residents, to shoppers, and to would-be home buyers. The revisions that have been made to the original plan are certainly an improvement to that first plan. But five-foot changes and setbacks here and there don't change the fact that the structure would be completely incongruent with its surroundings. It would loom over the courthouse and the homes around it and transform the neighborhood into a completely different place. And I can't even imagine what Stern Park will be like when four-hundred-plus residents start to walk their dogs there. I would also, I would ask you to take a close look at Alliance's other complexes in the Denver area, either in person or go online, as I did, and look at reviews and photos that other residents have posted. It paints a pretty clear picture. And ask yourselves if that's really an appropriate gateway to our downtown. I'm also concerned that Littleton's roads and infrastructure are not designed to handle the traffic that would accompany this development. The plan is proposing one-point-five parking spaces per residential unit. My husband and I have a one-point-five-car garage, and that means I park in the garage and he has to park in the driveway. These apartment residents won't have a driveway, so I ask, where is the second car going to go? Seems like residential streets are the only place. So what it all boils down to for me is that the proposed development will hurt my property values and will discourage others in investing in the area at a time when property values are beginning to increase and people are moving here from other places in the metro area to improve and restore the older homes that are here. I understand that development can be positive, but it must be thoughtful, responsible, and focused development, especially in a place like Littleton where the very draw is the town's charm, its history, and its aesthetic. I think that if we lose that, then we lose Old Town Littleton. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Peter Teney is against the project, but not speaking. Dave Mitchell. Did Dave Mitchell leave? He's against the project. Betty Carr is against the project, not speaking. Sue Young, against the project, not speaking. Andrew Benedict.
My name's Andrew Benedict. I live at fifty-nine oh-five South Crocker Street. But I also own a piece of land at fifty-seven seventy South Bema Street, where my wife and I had contracted with an architect to build a retirement home for ourselves. We're planning on spending probably six-hundred thousand dollars for the home itself, not counting the cost of the land that we'd already owned. So I would be immediately on the south end of this project. When I first heard about the project back in November, I was very concerned about it, immediately told the architect, "Hold off. I want to know what's going on here. I need to understand whether, before we build our home, whether this is going to be a three-hundred-and-twenty-five-unit building that I do not want to be, live next to." So we held off and then started conversations with Andy Clay. When he proposed the project, he suggested that I come down, visit with him, let him show me some of the projects that they have, and we did so. And a couple of us have spent multiple hours visiting with them, working with them, trying to get the project down to a reasonable level. We've probably met with them a dozen times at least. We've probably spent forty to fifty hours interacting with them over that time. Through that time, I've come to realize that Alliance is a quality company, that the people that we've interacted with are quality individuals, that everything that we have asked them to do, they have complied with, and we feel that, I feel very strongly that they are someone that would make a good neighbor to the neighborhood. I was very, very opposed to the project from the very beginning. I thought it was way too big. But as Fran said before, this site is going to get developed, and it's going to get developed with something large that's going to be there. As Glenn said, it could potentially have three-hundred-and-eighty thousand square feet of development, including a hundred-and-seventy-five residential units as part of that development. So I'm thinking a hundred-and-seventy-five residential units that are going to be smaller because there's going to be half of it also as commercial space of some type. Would I rather have that or would I rather have two-hundred-and-twenty-five units of high-quality residential construction going on there? And I've also come to the realization that in order to provide the type of amenities they're talking about, the amenities of outdoor swimming pools, the amenities of rec center, the amenities of exercise facilities, of Wi-Fi cafes, things like that, they have to have a certain size of project to make it economically viable. And I've come to realize that two-hundred-and-twenty-five units, when we drew our line in the sand, the six of us that were meeting, we immediately talked about no more than a hundred-and-seventy-five to two-hundred units. I feel that two-hundred-and-twenty-five falls within that, close enough to that range, that I found it acceptable. I am also a landlord. I have, my wife and I have, not to this scale, but twenty rental units, more than twenty rental units that we've had for years and years and years. There's been some concern about rents and too many units and rents going down. What I've found over the last thirty years of having rental units, and I have had them in good areas of town, and I've spent a lot of money fixing them up, my rents from twenty years ago, they were five-hundred dollars a month. This month, I'm currently renting them for sixteen-hundred dollars a month. So rents don't go down. They're going up and up and up. And if you have a quality project, people that can afford those rents will continue to occupy the units, will bring better neighborhoods. I rent to typically to young families that are relatively newly married, that are young professionals, the exact same demographic that Alliance is looking at, and that they, these people take care of the places. They end up being good neighbors to the point where at some point in time, they will go off and buy their own home. Hopefully, they stay in the neighborhoods of Littleton, thereby causing our property values to go up. So I have made a complete about-face over the last six months. I now support this project strongly and feel like there's something that's going to happen to this area. Let's make it be something that we can work with, with people that we can work with, that will do a good job with the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Saul Bright, either Murphy or Herfe, probably Murphy, is against the project, not speaking. That's the last person on the list. Is there anybody in the? Yeah. So if you'd like to speak, you first. Come on down, and then I'll go around and pick whoever else.
Man, it's late. Susan Burke Steiner, six-one-two-zero, South Stern Parkway. And again, I'd like to echo my personal thanks to you guys because I think, I know this sounds sucking up, but I'm really trying not to, that the planning board is the heart and soul because not only do you guys do a bunch of homework on your decisions and where you're coming from, but you actually, you know, buy into your process and stick to your guns. So I really appreciate it. I'm just going to quick, hopefully, go through the the main things, which we need to stick to, which is the COM Plan. The first thing is preserve Littleton's unique identity by protecting historic structures and emphasizing Littleton's distinct social and economic heritage. This building does not do that. And one thing I'm kind of big on is that we seem to be cannibalizing all the commercial and retail space for high-density residences, and that's because, why? Well, right now, you can't sell, build, and resell commercial retail space. But you can't high-density, and I would like to urge you to be patient, realize that these things are cyclical. And when we have less city revenue, which the commercial and retail is not providing, and we increase the number of expenses because we have to serve the citizens equally, we're just taking a double hit, and I'd like to urge you to think about that. The other thing that we keep hearing is that we've got to develop Littleton's economic independence. We emphasize downtown as Littleton's economic and social center. And frankly, we've, somebody's managed to feed the merchants, and I work downtown, I'm very active with hoodlums, so I am at heart a merchant, that they think the development of this size and proximity to their stores is going to result in greater revenue. And the developer has these crazy numbers, which I'd love to know where they're coming from. I think they're just blue-sky speculation, which, if I was a developer, I'd probably have these in my back pocket, too. But if we compare that situation to what happened to Aspen Grove after Alta Vista opened, they really didn't see any sales growth revenue. Here is a graph. This is from the sales tax revenue. And the red line is showing you between January of two thousand and eleven, Alta Aspen Grove apartments opened in June, and there's been a decline overall. So all those apartments back there did not contribute to sales tax revenue. There was higher spikes for one year during Christmas season, but there were also lower spikes during the typical right-around tax time. And it didn't go back up again. So that's just a huge myth. You know, more apartments, more sales tax revenue for the people close by? Eh, wrong. You know, basically, the issue is that the project does not meet the COM Plan goals and policies. View is not preserved from any angle. A four- or five-story building is still too tall if it's one or two buildings. Littleton Boulevard Corridor specifically states maximum of three stories. No way does Broadstone comply with this. And if you just look at it from a common sense standpoint, a view with large brick walls from every angle is not view preservation, in my mind, and I can't believe anybody else thinks that it could be. And just one quick question, which is kind of rhetorical. Why does the West facade not have to count towards the height limitation? The other issue that's been brought up before is that Engwood City staff has expressed concern with the Birmingham proposal, and I think without the city's approval, we'd be crazy to go forward with this. Keep going on, land use policy. New development should respect existing densities and land uses. It doesn't do that. Building along Bema Street should respect the scale and pattern of the houses across the street through design strategies such as articulation of building form, column, pier space, blah, blah, blah. It doesn't do that.
Summarize, please.
Yes, sir, I will. Basically, everything else on here, which I'm happy to put in the packet, if there is a packet, is that these things do not meet the COM Plan. I really appreciate Alliance and Broadstone, but I do not want to sit in that location. The current owner and developer are trying to force city council and the citizens to fit a square peg into a round hole with a sledgehammer. And I would urge you to keep up your good work and have another seven-zero against vote. Thank you for your time, and again, very appreciative of everything you all do for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Norman Stucker. I live at eight-oh-one Shadycroft Lane, and my office is located, excuse me, at two-thousand-and-nine West Littleton Boulevard, which is the courthouse office building. It is directly south, or directly east of the courthouse and southeast of the proposed site. Ironically, the courthouse, the cornerstone in the courthouse was built, was laid in nineteen-oh-seven. Fifty-three years later, in nineteen-sixty, Eugene Sternberg built this classic mid-century modern building, which is now the courthouse office building. And fifty-three years later, two thousand and thirteen, we have the opportunity to look at another iconic building in that location. The nineteen-sixty building didn't deteriorate from the courthouse building, and I don't think this building will as well. It is done at a high caliber. It's going to be a lead gold standard. And having a chance to work with the developer, we could not ask for a better person to come into the city of Littleton. This morning, as I went into my office, I had the opportunity to have a balcony that sits right on Littleton Boulevard, on the second floor. I went in, got a cup of coffee, went out on my balcony, and I looked to the southeast at a four-story Littleton Station building, and I look to the proposed four-story Littleton building, the Broadstone building, what would be proposed there to the southwest. It is consistent with It is consistent with the Littleton corridor from my location. I was not involved with the Littleton corridor study. I understand there's a discrepancy per the conversation that we had here earlier. But staff says the density along the corridor is 50 dwelling units per acre. We may define that between Windermere and Hickory. I find it illogical that we would go down in density as we move towards Light Rail Station. That just smacks in the face of good planning. As you get towards your downtown, as you get towards your Light Rail Station, at the very least, you would keep your density even at 50 dwelling units per acre. I think there's an argument for increased density, but that argument is being made. The argument is to be consistent with the Littleton corridor at 50 dwelling units per Middle of the day, I brought my dog in with me to my office, and I wanted to go for a break with my dog to cross Littleton Boulevard and visit Stern Park. And yes, traffic was a problem. I had to go down to Bemis and wait to try to get across to that crosswalk. I would very much appreciate a light at that station. That would allow me to cross the station, to cross the road, and get into Stern Park, giving people on the north side of Littleton Boulevard better access to that great amenity that is in the community, which is Stern Park and the Rose Garden. But in general, in summary, or in conclusion, I should say, the argument against this project is that it is too dense, it is too much traffic, and it's not in keeping with the neighborhood. And I would say that flies in the face of what the existing zoning is. In this country, our democracy is largely built on property rights, and there is a property right that goes with that B2 zoning. And while I understand the developer is asking your authority, or at least your opinion, whether they should change that zoning, we cannot assume that the zoning is residential, single-story residential, which is largely what the argument has been made. As I understand, that zoning would be two at 180,000 square feet, you could build a 350,000-square-foot office building right now, without having to go through this process.
Summarize, please.
A 350,000-foot office building parked at 3,000 is over 1,000 cars. And they are asking to put essentially a third of that. So I think that the building, one is in keeping with the Littleton corridor study, we're working with a very responsible developer who is compromised with the community, and it is much less impact on the neighborhood than the existing zoning would allow for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, he's going to be a gentleman, and let her go first.
Good evening. My name is Mary Weiss. I live at 1953 West Lilly Avenue. I saw you on TV tonight, and it compelled me to come down here, because there was some things that people weren't talking about at that time. I used to ride the light rail to work. I used to walk down Littleton Boulevard. But it scares me to walk on Alamo when it's raining or when it's icy in the wintertime, because I've seen people get up on the curb and come right at me when I'm walking down to the light rail. It seems to me that if we're going to increase so many people in this small area, that we need to have a pedestrian bridge, not just a sidewalk, because what you did was, if you say that they just have to widen the sidewalk, well, right now, I'm jumping into the grass when I walk down here tonight, because of the bicycles using the sidewalk and the skateboards. So you have to be very aware that you only have this much room to walk down the sidewalk, and then you're competing with bicycles and skateboarders. So we need a pedestrian bridge, not just a sidewalk that's going to be a little bit wider along there. Also, the setbacks, I have a little problem with that, because we have such an ice buildup in the wintertime along Littleton Boulevard and on those sidewalks, because of the splashback onto the sidewalks, the sidewalks are very icy along there. It's very dangerous. And I think that we need to have it set back a little farther, so that we could get a little sunshine on those sidewalks, so that we can get a little melting going on. Also, I'm really concerned with the density. I live in the Littleton Station on Lilly. We have 12 townhomes. We have 20 people that live in those 12 townhomes. So our density, I think, is high, but it's not as high as 50 per acre. So I'm opposed to the 50 people per acre, or 50 units per acre at this time. So I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Board. Stumaher, 6696 South Cocker Way, City of Littleton, 80120. Lived there for 12 years. Prior to that, I lived at 5471 South Blue Sage Drive, City of Littleton, 80123. Been on both sides of the river. I served on the City of Littleton's Planning Board for nine years, from 1993 to 2001. I appreciate what you do, and I hope to challenge you in what you're doing here this evening, to stick with the vision of the Littleton Boulevard corridor study. I served on the Planning Commission Planning Board. When the corridor study was developed, I remember the conversations and the study sessions very well. And I think that, well, I, too, was moved, I began the evening with you in front of my television, but was moved by a couple of early comments to come down and be here in person. I think all of this slicing and dicing, picking apart the COM Plan, the Littleton Boulevard Carter Study, is really, excuse the expression, it's an exercise in picking the fly shit out of the pepper. We're challenged to stick with the vision that the city has evolved over a number of years. This Carter Study didn't just happen, it goes all the way back to the last century, for crying out loud. I served on the Planning Board when the city annexed what's now Aspen Grove, when the city zoned what's now Aspen Grove, when we went through a long, drawn-out process of design standards and making Aspen Grove look like what it looks like today, evolved the famous rural vernacular language. I suggest that this developer is very collaborative. This developer has brought forth a good plan, a thoughtful plan. I would suggest it's a great plan. Something is going to happen on that site, and this is perhaps the best we're ever going to get. The Carter vision is that Littleton Boulevard become a great street, with a mix of commercial and residential uses, and an active and comfortable pedestrian environment. That's the challenge, to step up to the greatness of what we have, to build on these visions and to move the city forward. It's not going to be Mayberry forever. So I'm not here to scold you, I'm just here to encourage you to do your job and keep us moving ahead. And please support this project.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Doug Clark, 2454 Houston Waring. Listening to the meeting tonight, I almost felt like I was watching Pirates of the Caribbean. You remember at the beginning of the movie where Parley starts out as the law of the pirates? By the time you get to the end of the movie, it's just guidelines, suggestions, really? Well, it's sort of stunning to me to find out that the Littleton corridor study is really guidelines, just suggestions, really, that the drawings and the words on it are just pro forma suggestions on what it should be. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I should say, the law, which is the zoning ordinance, says that the site development plan has to comply with the design guidelines for the piece of property, which in this case is the Littleton corridor design guidelines for the sheriff's site, which has all of that pro forma stuff. If you zone something that can't be built, and it can't be built if the site development plan isn't approved, and the site development plan doesn't conform to those design guidelines, then it can't be approved. If you zone something that can't be built, it's obviously not in the general welfare of the city, because then you have a non-conforming use, which is the existing use on a piece of property, that's been zoned to something that can't be built. I would suggest to you that all of that stuff that's in the pepper is actually what matters, that when the citizens participate, and the COM Plan, and the Littleton corridor studies, and the public hearings, they actually sort of expect that stuff that appears there to actually be followed. Now, what's changed in this plan? Well, it's gone down 10 feet, but you still have a five-story parking garage. It's about, what, 150 feet from Bemis Avenue that has two-story, single-family detached houses? And it has to be a five-story parking garage, they can't fit the parking in unless it's five stories. You can count the parking places that's shown on the general plan for a single level, multiply that, or divide that by the number of spaces that are required, and figure out how high the parking garage has to be. So do you really think that a five-story parking garage, that close to a single-family historic neighborhood that's been there for, what, 80, 100 years, those homes, is compatible with the neighborhood or with the Littleton Boulevard corridor study? I would suggest to you this not, and I urge you to turn this down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. At this time, I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to respond to the comments.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the Planning Board. Appreciate your time tonight. I would like to go on record and respectfully disagree with the definition of medium density, as it's been discussed at one point tonight. Pardon my voice. And I'd like to read that portion in context briefly. I have the 11 by 17 version, I can put the larger one up here if you'd like, so we can get it on the screen.
Do you guys want it on there?
And if we could zoom in to the Arapoo County Sheriff's Facility. Oh, a little much. Okay, that's good. And specifically, it's identifying it as a development catalyst site, and that second paragraph reads, "The site is currently zoned B1, which does not allow residential development." We have discussed that B1 is inaccurate, it's B2, which actually potentially does allow some development, residential development. But it states that it allows some commercial uses that are incompatible with the redevelopment plan. "The county's interest will be to sell the property for its maximum value. If the site were rezoned for transit-oriented development at 40 units per acre, the property could have a value equal to or greater than its current B1 zoning." So I would propose that the 40 units an acre is, was a baseline intended to be a minimum as a threshold point, that somewhere, I suppose, between 40, and the staff has guided us, 50 units an acre, that it's not specific at this site, but we have moved to try to accommodate staff's interpretation of that for us in their guidance. Our initial, I'm sorry, our changes have not been cosmetic. These changes to height and density, which density, our density has been calculated by the city code, as the city code requires, setbacks, these are significant changes to our, to the project and to the number of units and the amount of people that will live there, the amount of parking, the amount of trips generated, and then setbacks as well, as we've discussed on the third and fourth floors. We've listened, and we've incorporated Planning Board comments and neighborhood comments. We have restrained ourselves to new information tonight in this hearing, but I have to reiterate that each reason to deny our proposal, as suggested by the, those in opposition, are components that would be an issue in the current use by right, and probably significantly greater. So I see this as a proposal of limits, a project that limits the current parking, that limits the current trips per day, that limits the height, that limits the architecture, that limits the design quality and the construction quality, in a way that the B2 zoning just does not. One, a couple of things I do want to address, widening Alamo does include, and I don't know if this is in the staff report, but it does include what we call slush barrier, which is essentially a Jersey barrier that would be built in addition to that widening to protect the walkway from slush and rain, which would create a better condition than exists right now. And another thing that I thought was a good question, why would someone rent at this rate when they could buy? And the answer is because, and the reason why we're seeing people do this all over is because of the bubble that happened in single-family residential, because tying up 20% of your equity in slowly appreciating homes is not necessarily their best use of capital. And it doesn't mean that they're not committed long-term to the community, it just means that they don't want to commit their capital there right now. There are certainly young families that move here that will find this as a lightning rod to find a home, that they will move into homes in Stern Park. It's an amazing neighborhood, it's a beautiful neighborhood. Downtown Littleton is amazing. This is a phenomenal location. We understand that, and that's what's driving the quality and the thoughtfulness and consideration that we've given this design. And I got to say, we've been called hired guns, our proposal has been called a 150-pound dog and a monster, but I got to tell you, we've also been commended tonight and complimented by residents, both who have, who still oppose us and those who support us. I just want to take a second to thank them for their civility and the respect that they've returned to us. I'm proud of who we are and what we build, and I'm confident that this will be an excellent project at this location. And I hope you vote yes for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does staff have anything to add? No, we don't. Okay. This time, I'll put it up to the board to ask the staff or the applicant, any questions you may have. Start with Carrie this time.
Okay, I have a question for the city. The Littleton Boulevard Corridor Study, has that been adopted by council?
By council, I think. Yeah, yeah. It was accepted by council.
Or ratified.
Is that the same thing?
Yeah, ratified. Yeah, ratified.
So, is it a part of the law, or is, you know, is it?
No, there was actually quite a discussion on whether it should be adopted into the comprehensive plan, so it would be of the same weight, I guess, of the Stern Park Neighborhood Plan, but council did not choose to do that. They felt it was probably a little too specific for a broad comprehensive plan.
Are we limiting questions just to the city right now, or can I? All questions?
Sorry, you can ask both.
I have a question for Andy. How many parking spaces are there? Are those counted out in the architecture plot plan?
I believe it's 338 parking spaces, is that right? Okay, so it's a little, it's over 1.5. It's 1.5 plus 20.
Does that include visitor or not visitor?
That does include visitor. And I would also add that the 1.5 is a minimum. We've identified that as a minimum because at this location, we believe it's adequate. We have volunteered to eliminate on-street parking or go to permanent permit parking if that's what the neighborhood wants to do. We do not believe that we need the on-street parking, even with the retail. We believe that we can accommodate that and meet the retail requirement for that 1,200 square feet if that is converted to retail, if it's leased out by an operator.
I don't have any questions right now.
Okay.
Waiting for the proposal.
I have a question for staff. I want to better understand the comment that Doug made about the current zoning and whether that still needs to abide by the design standards of the corridor plan.
Our feeling is you couldn't, you could certainly use the design guidelines to affect the physical design, but we don't think you can limit the current zoning by the land use restrictions that are in the design guidelines. Not, you do that through zoning, not through a ratified document by council.
So, the zoning would overwrite the land use?
The land use recommendations, yes.
End it? Enter? Mark? Dave?
I just have a couple of questions. On the PD plan, I just want to figure out if this is, if this picture is accurate. You have a View 7 on the, it's Alamo Avenue termination element.
View 7?
View 7, yeah, yeah. Southeast elevation, page four.
I see it.
And it looks like from the, from the building to the south is the much larger one, and it looks like that basement story is visible through that entire, I mean, am I looking at it wrong? It looks like it, that elevation is visible through that entire building, along that west elevation.
I can hear my architect jumping up about this, and I'll tell you what he's going to say. In the software that they use, it does not address topo as clearly as, say, our photographic renderings that we did, which incorporate the city's GIS data. So, Hersh, if you want to add to that, you're welcome to. I know what you're gonna say.
I think I understand your question better because I know the area you're referring to. The answer is, when we're trying to input the topo in there, there were portions of the basement shown in the Northerly Building, but having studied it further, there won't be. And there's another great reason for it, that if, you know, one of the reasons why we're providing the basement level is because the site naturally slopes 10, 12 feet. So, if our main level starts at a certain point at Bemis, we have two options. Either provide an active use down in the basement level that would result on the west side, or do a 10-foot-high blank wall. Well, there were several other discussions that propelled us in that direction, but we wouldn't, after having cut the building into two, it would be pointless to provide, let's say, two or three dwelling units of basement on the north half of the building and provide circulation for it, elevator for its stairs, it would make no sense. So, what you see in that particular graphic is wrong. There would not be a basement component to the northerly half of the project.
Okay, okay. So, it is just the 22% kind of on the south?
Yes, and that was an earlier graphic that Andy showed where we actually shaded the area where, yeah, so it would be the entire west side of the southerly building and a portion of the south side of the southerly building, which is naturally how the grade falls. Another thing we want to do is, we have this vision that we've discussed with staff and with fire department, that instead of doing just the fire lane, we want to kind of do a multi-use pathway on the, so that, you know, it's more pedestrian-activated. And if we locate, to the great, there's one of the guidelines in there, is that to the greatest extent feasible, all these ground-level units need to engage with sidewalks, and that locating a basement level that would allow us to do that.
Okay. And then, so along those lines, if you want to sit there, I had a question about the berm.
Yes.
I had heard that there, that you need approval from the city of Inglewood to put the berm in. Have you had discussions with them, and do you know what their reactions were?
We've had some discussions with them, but not a whole lot of detailed discussions. What we understand is that they would have some concern regarding trees being planted on top of that berm. So, what we did was, for the purpose, you know, there's a site plan process to follow, but the G D P D basically says that, that that is an enhanced landscape amenity. If a berm is possible for screening purposes, great. If not, it has to revert back to kind of a more of a depression, then we would treat it like a riparian landscape area and, you know, really take advantage of the extra water that would accumulate there. So, it could be a berm, it could be not be a berm.
So, would that then change the view from, say, Alamo or from the parking lot?
Potentially somewhat, but I think I want to draw your attention, this kind of rebuts some of the comments that were made, that there's the berm, yes, but there's also the landscaping and the slope that ensues afterward and, you know, ends up at the track edge. And there's a, that southerly corner, that cluster of trees actually existing, and I think there would be a great idea to essentially continue that line, because that's, that's not part of the Inglewood ditch, and we should have total control there. And I think it'd be a great idea to have a continuous canopy of trees along that edge. That would act as a nice screen, too.
Okay. All right, and, let's see. I guess I just wanted to draw you out, I guess, a little bit on the parking. It sounds like you've got enough parking for each bedroom to have one car about, and...
That's correct. We're currently at a minimum of one space per bedroom.
Okay, and then, do you expect there to be extra vehicles there that would park on the street, or is there?
Again, we don't expect that that's necessary. We, if we're more than happy to work with the neighborhood, if that's, if they're interested in pursuing a permit program or eliminating parking on the street, that's, that's fine with us. We're actually, our investor requires a higher parking ratio than what, than the one and a half, so it will be a little bit higher than that. But again, because there's, we didn't anticipate a need to provide more than the city's requirements at this location, we didn't include that in the proposal.
Okay. All right, I think all my other questions have been answered, so.
Okay. My couple of questions, stay right there, architect. View 7. And I think this is, again, a graphic issue, or you just didn't update the plan. The building on the left side of the breezeway looks like five stories. Is that just the, didn't update it?
Yeah, that's exact, sorry. That's exactly the same issue as what he mentioned.
Okay. My only comment on that is, you might want to update those plans before you present them again. Thank you. The berm comment, are you, if you, if you can do the berm, you're committing to the berm.
Absolutely. We would prefer to do it.
And on the riparian option, you're committing to landscaping where you can do it, maybe on the up slope for screening purposes.
Absolutely. In the initial conversations we've had with Inglewood, the city of Inglewood, are that they would be, they would allow us to do grass, ornamental grasses and maybe shrubs, but their concern are, is specifically tree roots and damage.
I have a question, and I'm done with the architecture. I have a question regarding the signalization in the left turn. The comment was made, and it brought up a concern for me about stacking, trying to make a left turn onto Bemis if there's only two spaces on a very busy day. I know we haven't worked out with Public Works about the whole light thing yet, but is there a commitment to work out, or maybe there's a requirement, that stacking goes along with reconfiguring that intersection?
Right, well, if signalized, there would be sufficient stacking within the existing...
With what's there?
Yeah, with what's there.
Okay. So, it's probably, it's got to be more than two spaces?
Oh, I think there's 60 feet.
Okay.
So, that's probably, yeah, two to three is about all it will hold. If you give, if you assume a 25-foot per vehicle, that allows...
But designing for that intersection, signalization would involve designing the whole intersection. If, if it requires any kind of lengthening of the stacking or anything, is that part of determining what's proper for that intersection?
It might be a part of determining what the phasing ought to be. When I did the level of service analysis, I assumed that there would be a protected left turn arrow for that movement.
Okay. Last question. What was that? Light, staggered light or split light? Now, I want you to explain what a split light is to everybody.
Okay, I haven't had a chance to talk to Mr. Bloston about that, so I don't know exactly what his thoughts are, but it sounds like combining the two intersections, Court Place and Bemis, they're separated by about 180 feet. So, you would probably need to stop the eastbound, you know, you put your signal heads for the eastbound on Alamo over by Court Place, and then you'd, your westbound movements would stop at, over here at Bemis, you'd have this 180-foot intersection, and then your northbound movements and your southbound movements would probably need to be split phased so that, you know, the...
So, that accommodates the stagger in the opposite street entrance into the rec center and the courthouse?
Right.
Okay. I was wondering about that, with the fact they're not lined up, that it helps Bemis, but it doesn't help the courtyard entrance. So, okay, thank you. If there are no other questions, oh, do you have any questions later on?
I had a question for Glenn real quick, or the city. Can you just confirm, is the plan for the sheriff's site redevelopment, I've heard different height limitations mentioned tonight, does that plan specifically say four-story height limitation?
The height is called out in a couple of places in the design guidelines, I think that's what you're referring to, right? And I think there is one section under Architecture, under the specific chapter for this site, that says three stories on Littleton Boulevard and Bemis Street, stepping back for higher, for additional height. Doesn't specifically say maximum height is X, minimum height is Y. Then there's what we put in the staff report, which was the possible site plan for development of the site, and there, I believe, it says two to three stories and four stories in parentheses as a possible option, meeting that overall requirement that we want to limit height on adjacent to Bemis Street and Littleton Boulevard and step back as you go increase height from there. Have you got it, actually? I'll read it. Building form next to Littleton Boulevard and Bemis Street should be a maximum of three stories, stepping up in height away from the street. So, that's the overall guideline. And then, if you remember in your staff report, and I think we showed it in our presentation here, there is a typical site plan shown with two buildings. Up on, up on Littleton Boulevard, it says lower in parentheses, two to three stories, and then in the other building to the south, it says higher with four stories in parentheses.
Thanks.
Is that it? All right. At this point, I'd like to close the public hearing. Thank you, everyone, for your comments, and... I'd like to open it up to the board for deliberation. Comments? Thoughts?
Want a proposal first, or you just want to discuss?
If you have a motion, you can go ahead and submit it.
We should just make the motion, and then we could discuss it from there.
Okay.
I move to approve the Planning Board Resolution Number 13-007, which forwards a recommendation of approval to City Council.
Second.
We have a motion to approve Board Resolution Number 13-07, and we have a second comment. Carrie?
Start on this end. I'd like to address a couple of things that, born and raised in Littleton, this is the town I care about, that's why I'm here. I feel if you can't complain if you're not willing to do something to step in and give a hand, so, just a little bit about me. You know, we've talked a lot about Littleton being an infill city, and we're not able to grow anymore, so that's why places like this are getting so much more scrutiny, because it's an important part of the city. It's on a historic street that provides a lot of character to our city. For me, as I'm looking at all these different plans, the Stern Park Neighborhood Plan, for me, carries more weight because the majority of this proposal is on Bemis, not on Littleton Boulevard. So, that's how I am going about making my decision, and for me, Neighborhood Goal Number One, preserve the unique character of the neighborhood and general quality of life aspects, especially the mix of architectural styles, mature trees, and quiet atmosphere of the residential areas. Does this fit into that? In my opinion, no. This is a gateway, and it's, I feel that we need to preserve the character.
First, I'd like to say I don't appreciate anyone questioning my motives for being on the board. I would like to say, Andy, nice job. You guys have done a really good job, and I appreciate all your hard work and everything you've done. I'm not opposed to multifamily housing in Littleton. I know there are a lot of projects on the board, and I'm certainly not opposed to multifamily. I think it's inevitable in the city and as we go forward into the next century. Littleton Boulevard Corridor Study, I believe, is poorly written and conflicting in many areas, so I'm not too crazy about that, and I think if it were rewritten today, it might have some different input. My feeling is this project does not meet the Stern Park Neighborhood Goals and Policy My feeling is this project does not meet the Stern Park neighborhood goals and policies. I think I agree with Carrie. The project does little to improve Littleton Boulevard and more to detract from Stern Park, so those are my concerns with it. And that's all I have tonight.
I just want to say thank you, because I know you guys have jumped through a lot of hoops, and this has been a very arduous project, I'm sure. Thank you. Sorry.
You know, I too, like Carrie, got involved for the purpose of being able to influence what goes on in our community, because I love our community. With that, I think what we experienced tonight, and I know what others have experienced in times in history, is this is how it's supposed to work. It's having plans and guidelines to help guide our judgment, having the applicant presenter case, and having the community, both for and against, present the facts as they see it and interpret them. So I think this is, while I'm very tired, I'm very proud to be part of this process, so thank you to really everyone that has been involved, city staff, applicant, and the citizens here. So with that, I think what makes this one so difficult is because it is a very important project, both as the developer has presented it. It's a really, really great project, and I think they have come a long way. But also, it's a very important site in Littleton, and so hence the scrutiny, hence the involvement of the community, and I think the involvement of my fellow board members. And what we see in the plan, so it's not just one thing that's guiding us, it's the comp plan, it's the corridor study, it's Stern Park, all working in conjunction to help make the best decision for the community. So it has, it is difficult for me. I have spent a lot of time reviewing this, not just this time around, but even previous times. And there are, and I have dissected the flesh of it, and I have attempted as best that I could to really understand where it does meet and where it does not meet, and it is a difficult decision. But I did, I do think this is a strong plan, but I do feel we need to use the tools that are at our disposal to guide our decision, and those tools to me are the Stern Park Neighborhood, the Littleton Corridor Study, and the comp plan.
Enter.
Dreading my turn coming. I'll start with the first part. I joined this board because, like many on the others, I do care about Littleton. To the question of the process, I interviewed with the City Council. My words were taken at value, and I was asked and appointed to take this role, and I take that with great honor. You're welcome to do the same, if that is indeed something that you choose to do. Andy McKenzie Harsh, I have kids, and we talked just two nights ago about grit, and you guys got it. And I applauded you for your entrepreneurial efforts before. I absolutely am impressed by the amount of times you've gone back for another beating, taken another, I mean, another meeting with what you're doing, and, it was on purpose, and the steps that you've taken to reduce the density. I think that your attitude of not stepping away from the LEED Gold Certification has been commendable. And as we look, and it's been said by many in this room tonight, that I can't wait till we are in a position as a board to enforce that throughout the city, enforce the high quality standards, enforce that uniqueness there. So I thank you for not backing down. I think it's beautiful. I think your design is very well done. If we are true to incorporating the pieces of the historic plans and the downtown plans and the Littleton studies and keeping with the style, I think there's a great benefit there. And while I would like to see, I do think there should be apartments or some sort of housing, multifamily, higher-density housing on that site without question. Last time, I think you were on the 60-yard line. Today, I think you're on the 80-yard line. And it's just not enough to push it over for me right now. As I, I know that there are a number of businesses, somebody had mentioned Karate Studios on Bemis Street. I didn't know there were two of them. I was aware there was one of them. And technically, in places there weren't even supposed to be businesses, are there. But I do see that higher density would add value to those businesses, both immediately there as well as certainly to the downtown area. And I place a lot of weight on our business leaders and community leaders that are downtown and restaurant owners, that are trying to populate our city so that we have a vibrant downtown, so that we have all of the amenities, and that they have a longstanding ability to prosper in our area. There's, so there's no doubt to me that there is inevitability, that this downtown diamond is going to need to increase district, increase density throughout. So I think, I think there. As I think about the question too, I think about changing the zoning. Is there a suitable enough cause to change the zoning on this area? And right now, the current plan, and it's phrased somewhat negatively, but it's parking structures, food services, bars and taverns, dry cleaning, vets' offices, hospitals, movie theaters, new automobile, I think there's still options for this site. I then look at the development scenarios put forth by the economic gentleman this evening, and the existing zoning calls out 175 apartments. I frankly think that's the target. That if we could get down to, as page 10 of the Littleton Corridor Study says, two to three buildings, two to three-story building followed by a four-story building with the same set apart, following the same structure that I think you've already hit upon, and can get it within the existing zoning residential number, I think we're going to get really close to that end zone that we refer to. If there, I don't really know, procedurally know how to do this, but if there was a way to direct the height to be that four-story, two to four-story, as literally written in the Littleton Plan... Mr. O'Donnell, Nicky could probably speak better to zoning ratios than I can, but 40 seems to be a better number, a little closer to where we're going. And I'm very literal, and I appreciate the drawing that I think Leah put up, where it, to me, if it's 40 per acre, then we're talking about the acre where the building is, we're not talking about all the extended land, and maybe I misunderstand that policy, but to me, it's a very simple. And the other part is, four means four. Five means five, four means four, three means three, and I want to stay literal to that, and I know you're taking advantage of a geography there. But if it says two to three, and that's what the people ratified 10, 15 years ago, then that's good, and I think we should stick to it. And then at the end of the day, and it's consistent with what I said last time, you are building in the most timeless location Littleton has left. The ones that we're looking at in other parts of the town, those areas develop and grow much differently than the pillar that we have, of the skyline that we have. And I think you take that very seriously, and I think your design has taken that seriously. But we have one shot at this. This is our Brigadoon property on there, and at the end of the Brigadoon, they're all looking for a miracle, and I guess I'm coming to you in my comments saying, we're looking for a miracle. And the miracle is to be able to produce the quality of product that you've proposed to us, to do so in a way that you, as businesspeople, can prosper and develop in there, but yet that is so unique to our part of town, so unique to that property, that it is a timeless gem that we are proud of for the entire generation, not just this single period of time where the laws contribute to this action. So for right now, my vote is probably going to be no, but it's not because I don't want you to keep going, it's because I just don't think we're there yet.
First, I want to comment about the quote about following the mob that our planning board would do. I don't think Littleton citizens would be, like to be called a mob. I have, over my 12 years being on planning boards and planning commissions, I've been lots of times against the mob and have suffered the consequences. So I resent that comment. I've been a proponent of multifamily residential throughout my 12 years. I count four projects in downtown Littleton that I voted for and I'm proud of, as well as other multifamily developments in and around the outskirts of Littleton. I lament the fact of the loss of commercial space in this location, although I can see the inevitability of this site being eventually residential. The argument here is the density of the residential. Rest of my comments are going to be kind of scatter, shotgun scattered here. I'm tired throughout this process of the finessing of the stories. We have a five-story building on this site, followed closely by four-story buildings in the rest of the site, setbacks notwithstanding. The thought that, trying to, hey, the west side, five stories, that doesn't count, the fifth story doesn't count. They are stories, and we have a five-story building. I'll stick by my assessment for the Littleton Boulevard Corridor Study that talks about the 50 units from Windermere to Hickory, written in stone. Someone mentioned, well, we, why would you change the density as you go further west? Why don't you increase it? Well, an argument could be that we voted for a lesser density because we didn't want to overwhelm the downtown area or overwhelm the courthouse site. BERMS, there's a BERM proposed on the west side to try to hide the five-story building. To me, that's a waste of good dirt. It's a gimmick, forget it. The developers, part of the process I have a problem with, developer comes in with 325 units, then 300, then 250, then 225, now magically he's meeting the Littleton Boulevard Corridor Study. Well, why wasn't he crowing about conforming to the Littleton Boulevard Corridor Study by originally proposing 225 units? Why the 325? He was trying to cram as many units on the site to see if the corn cobs of Littleton would accept that number of sites. Let's talk about the Littleton Boulevard Corridor Study. There was a comment about, let's continue with the spirit of the Littleton Boulevard Corridor Study, just a few quotes. Buildings should align with, face, or otherwise complement adjacent single-family residents and historic houses. That's not been done with this building. Plantings should be placed to complement the architecture. It should not be conceived as a screen for poorly designed buildings. To my mind, the buildings are poorly conceived. The architecture character should complement the existing historic architecture of this sub-area. It does nothing of a sort. To create buildings that provide human scale, interest, and variation. I think any dispassionate observer or walker along Littleton Boulevard that doesn't have a dog in this fight would say, this building doesn't, doesn't even come close to meeting the standards of human scale, interest, and variation, plus tying it with the existing historic architecture of this sub-area. I could go, let's see, the building should possess an architecture character that reinforces the historic character of the existing buildings in this area. Once again, they do not. Sloped roofs are preferred over flat roofs, although there's a little wiggle room there. There is a drawing on page 16 of the corridor study that shows at least half the site as two to three-story buildings stepping down to the courthouse, not stepping up from two to three stories to four and five stories. That is crystal in the Littleton Boulevard Corridor Study. I keep hearing the words "unique, high-quality, iconic gateway" for this building. I don't see that at all. I see this somewhat as tedious architecture, cell block 17 architecture that's very prevalent all around our light rail stations throughout the Denver area. There is absolutely no unique quality of this building that separates it from other tedious buildings around light rail stations. One last item, one speaker talked about, in order to get a rezoning, you need manifest, approved manifest air, or changing conditions. To my mind, that hasn't been met here. All that's been shown here is there's economic hardship. Well, you bought the site with a zoning in place, live with a zoning, just like I have to live with a zoning of my house. It would be to my benefit to put a high-rise in my R1 district. I'm not allowed to do that. Why is it that this developer can come along and literally demand that we give them the rezoning, or we're bad people? That's my comments.
Thank you. Dave?
Not sure how to follow all that. I will, I will make a comment similar to some of these other guys, that somebody made a comment that, and I think it was probably this, I think it was the same person, that this is just a token vote, and we're just here to vote no. And when I objected to that, I was basically called a liar, and I don't appreciate that. But I also disagree vehemently with that. I, you know, I wouldn't be here for what, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 30, four and a half hours plus to listen to all this if I was just gonna, if I had my mind made up already. And, you know, I take this job seriously, and I join this board to take the job seriously, and I was told to come with an open mind, and that's what I've done. So, so I really haven't, hadn't made up my mind through this whole process, you know, kind of waffling back and forth in my head, except, you know, I think this is a great project, I think it really looks good, the pictures that you guys have put together look great. It's, you know, I'm not all that concerned about the density necessarily, you know, it looks pretty good from the, from the side of the light rail. The thing that, can I borrow this really quick? The thing that's concerned me through this whole process, I guess I didn't really mention before, is that there's a picture in the corridor study regarding the sheriff's site, and it shows very clearly these sloping roofs, not a flat roof. We've talked about sloping roofs, and I see there's some elements that alludes to sloping roof, but really is more of an overhang. And I think that just, the east elevation that faces these single-family houses just does not, it's not, it doesn't match, it doesn't blend in, it doesn't, it's not the flavor I think that this, that this study is looking for. So that, I mean, that's my biggest concern with it. I mean, if you can fit 225 or 250 units in that and make it look, make it fit in and match and be compatible, then that's great, but it just doesn't quite seem to do that yet. And I guess I would agree that you guys have made a lot of great progress, and it's, I hate to see you keep coming back for more, but, you know, it's great that you guys are persistent, and you've made a lot of progress, and, you know, I think you, you know, you really could get to that, to that point where it really matches, that it matches the guidelines, that it fits in, that, you know, you're never going to get everybody to agree that, you know, there's always going to be people opposing, neighbors opposing. But I think that, you know, you've really come a long way, and I'd urge you to keep trying and come up with something that, that can be approved for this site. I guess that's all I got.
Thank you. What? You have something to say? Go ahead.
Being at the end is, you know, you guys have said it all, but the one thought that is really, in my mind, is, yes, you have the Stern Park Neighborhood Park, and the Littleton Corridor Study, and the sheriff's site plan, and the comp plan, and all of that, but, you know, if you just... you know, when we saw the presentation from Silverstein on the housing study and that kind of thing, I mean, you know, the recommendation is for density around transit, and as you get closer, you become more dense and more, you know, and you go further out, and you're less dense. So in looking at this site, I mean, Board Member Graham, I think your comments resonated with me the most, you know, it's a sweet spot, it's a gateway, but, you know, we have to think about also in its context, it's not just the gateway, it's also the transit-oriented development site, the only parcel like this that's left in the town, and what's the appropriate use for that? And it's going to be, you know, oftentimes it involves, you know, multifamily, oftentimes it involves density and that kind of thing. Now, whether we have it exactly with this project or not, you know, that's the question that we grapple with, does it fit within this, and do we grant a rezoning, you know, to match that and so forth? To the letter, you know, at the end of the day, it doesn't fit with the five stories and so forth. I mean, if you really look at it to the letter and so forth. But I will also say that, you know, it's a great project, and you guys have done a really good job of making the changes and so forth. Again, whether or not we're there yet, you know, that's going to be, that's your challenge tonight, is to determine that. But my main comment is that, you know, really, the use is not necessarily contradictory to, you know, good planning principles, so.
I also want to thank you, Andy and your team, for your hard work and the length at which you've stuck to this, working with the neighborhood, going back to the neighborhoods multiple times, getting their input. You really are showing an effort to make it work. I do believe that there are some rough edges, that there are some things that kind of come up that haven't been 100% worked out. But those particular items aren't necessarily zoning items, they're site plan items that we as a city need to work with should it go forward. I believe that this site is a prime transit site, that it should be residential. There's even reference in the downtown plan or the corridor plan that says it should be residential or is recommended to be residential. When we talk about trying to get people out of their cars, trying to create an environment that has synergy, that has energy to help a community be vibrant, to be exciting, to be a place where people want to be, we talk about a core area, and that, in this particular case, we have a downtown, we have a light rail station, we have a courthouse, we have a rec center, buck center, we have a community college, we have parks, all within walking distance. This is a residential site. Just in that regard, I see it being incompatible. We have the Littleton Corridor Study, the Stern Park Neighborhood Plan, the Comprehensive Plan, the zoning code, and we don't really reference it because it's not part of it, but the downtown plan, all converge at an intersection on this site. Which one do you listen to? Which one's the strongest? Which one speaks the loudest? I don't know if any of them do necessarily. Of course, a zoning speaks the loudest because it's law. The others are recommendations. So is it the right use for this site? Does it have the right context where all of these things are converging? Like I said, I think it has a rough around the edges. I think there needs to be some things that worked out, but I think it's the right context for this site. I think about B2 zoning and what could that yield? We talk about 175 potential residential units, but that comes with another 100 or so thousand square feet of office, that when you try to cram all that onto that same site, you're going up. So how do you do that? How does a developer come in with the right to put 300,000 square feet on that site without going to the board? They just go to get, they do a site plan. Whether or not that, whatever happened, we don't know. So do we wait for that developer and hope he does it right? Does the building as it's designed now interfere with the context of the adjacent community and other buildings, the historic buildings? Computer models are great. They bring us a lot further than we used to be, but unfortunately, it's very hard to truly gauge it until you see it. And that's us as board members and professional staff, we try to make that determination. I would like to see a building that is a brownstone, but is that going to happen? No. I mean, that would be historical context right there, maybe not a brownstone, but, you know, Victorian architecture that fits in with the houses across the street or down the road. So could the architecture be a little bit better, different? Possibly. So it's really tough, and I agree with some of the other comments, that you've come a long way. But this is a rezoning, and we have to judge it based upon whether it meets the comp plan and the Littleton Corridor Plan, and whether it's compatible with the Stern Neighborhood Plan, with the comp plan being the most weighty because it's an adopted document. So, actually, the Stern Neighborhood Park Plan is within the comp plan, so they go And so for me to say no, I'd have to justify why. Why is it not in context? It might be slightly bigger, it might be slightly boxy. We don't have any architectural design guidelines to tell us that. In the Littleton Corridor Plan, there are no architectural design guidelines that says it has to look this way. But apartment architecture in this day and age has a certain look, and you are providing apartment architecture that's better than down the street. The materials are brick. The courthouse is brick. I looked at the Buck Center. The Buck Center, why didn't anybody complain that the Buck Center was going to, or did they? I wasn't here. Complained that the Buck Center was going to override the courthouse because it's as big or next to it, 50 feet away from it or 100 feet away from it. But it does have brick architecture, so there's some compatibility there. But it's still a fairly modern-looking building, but the courthouse is somewhat modern with some historical accents. So all that rambling, I have to say it's in context with the comp plan, and those are my comments. Any other follow-up comments, or do we want to call for a vote?
No follow-ups. It's hard when you go first, you forget stuff. And I don't mean any disrespect here because I know that what Alliance does is build apartments, and I think you build nice apartments. But this is an exciting piece of land with million-dollar views, and it is the gateway, and I think it deserves a really great, different idea, something that maybe we don't even have yet. We need, you know, people are clamoring for single-family housing. We have a lot of apartments, but we don't have a lot of single-family housing, even attached single-family housing. It's, there's a shortage in Littleton right now of inventory. There's nothing to buy. So I just would like to see, you know, for us to think about something great, something that's, you know, going to be there for a long time to come and mean a lot to our city.
Call for a vote? The vote has not passed. So what do we?
So the code requires you to forward a resolution with your recommendation to the city council, so I would ask for you to take a 10-minute recess so that we can go and draft a resolution recommending denial based on the discussion you just had, and we will bring it back to you for your consideration and a vote after that recess.
Okay. 10-minute recess. It's about time.
It's about time.